On this date of June 1st, 2020. This is how it's going to work. We will call your case. We'll ask each presenter to please state their name, identify themselves and the property in question, state your request of the board and identify your hardship and the reasons for the request. Remember, your hardship cannot be financial in nature and it runs with the land. The board will ask you questions, after which you will have the opportunity to answer the questions. And the meeting is recorded, so please be sure to state your name.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID.
The board will go into business session and discuss and make a decision. There are five voting members on the board and it takes four popular votes for the variance to be granted. So if there are any questions about that procedure, just let us know. Okay, we're gonna start with 26 Turner Hill Road. Oh, did you need to?
Yeah, do you want to do a roll call, Madam Chair?
No, you can do it.
Okay. Laura Edmonds?
Present.
John Mahoney?
Present.
Ben Bielis?
Present.
Luke Tashian?
Present.
Jessica Cardone?
Present.
Becky Walsh?
Present.
Hold on. Cynthia Doll is here. I know she is. And Richard Keratou, just unmute them so they can respond. And Cynthia Doll and Richard Keratou.
Yep, Richard is on it.
Cynthia Doll is present.
Awesome. But Madam Chair, you're good to go.
Okay, we will start with, this is Laura Edmonds. We'll start with 26 Turner Hill Road. The application of Alexander and Carla Watson are the owners for the variance of Sections 3.5 E2 to allow construction of a two-story addition off the south side of the existing residence and a one-story addition off the west side of the existing residence. The installation of an air conditioning condenser by propane tank for the property located in the two-acre zone, map 39 block 105 lot 1. Is, is it Mr. Watson or will you be?
You've got, Richard Vale is unmuted and Alexander Watson, I just unmuted you, and Carla Watson, if you want to speak.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Richard Vale, Caroline Alexander's architect on the project, 26 Turner Hill Road. You may recall, last fall, we were before you with an application. It feels like, with all that's going on in the world, it feels like it could have been 10 years ago. But it was this past fall where we, we went before you with a similar but larger scope application where we were proposing to expand off the west side of the house mainly. It was a bit larger project. And due to budget constraints, we've had to redesign the project and scale it back in order to make it affordable to my clients. So what we have tonight is a more modest where we're gonna mainly expand off the south side with an addition that would entail a office kind of sitting room on the first floor, about 324 square feet, and on the second floor, a master bath and walk-in closet. And then we're also expanding an existing shed roof structure. We're gonna end up reconstructing it, but expanding that footprint by about 50 square feet on the first floor to create a breakfast room off the kitchen. So that's the architecture, the extent of what we're proposing. And again, we'd also need a variance on a condenser that's kind of in between the garage and the house on the west side. And on the north side of the garage, we're proposing a propane tank that would be above ground because we, the site conditions are such that we don't think we can bury a tank. And so it would be an above-ground propane tank. As far as the hardships, they're really no different than last time. Again, we had an issue with, it's kind of an odd kind of pear-shaped lot that's long and narrow and then rectilinear. So it really made it difficult for much of any footprint modification to comply with the current zoning regulations. And because the setbacks kind of overlap each other. It's also for, you know, we're within a two-acre zone, but it's a 0.854 acre property, so it's, you know, it's undersized. So it makes it definitely tougher to comply with the building setbacks for a two-acre zone. So that's kind of hardships. We didn't write many alternatives on, you know, buildings in the front of the house would, would make it difficult to access the property because the driveway is kind of tight on the house as you come in. And also, we didn't, we kind of liked the character of the house. We didn't want to modify it to the point where you wouldn't recognize it. So with this proposal, we're really retaining the historic kind of cottagey character of the house and not really not changing that at all, aside from the south addition, but we're not changing the roof lines of the existing structure in any meaningful way. So that's our intention and hoping to get a variance to be able to build it.
This is John Mahoney. Could you walk us through change in coverage? And what's different, at least from the outside dimensions, this request versus the one we reviewed in the fall? So is the coverage up, down, same?
Pretty much, it's, the overall square footage, we're down about two, that's called about 200 square feet from the previous application, but most of that additional area was on the second floor. So footprint-wise, we're close to the same coverage. We are building, as far as site coverage, we're building over a patio, an existing patio. We're taking up the patio. And so the site coverage is really almost non-existent. You know, we're not expanding that really at all, aside from the breakfast area that we're gonna be expanding, you know, by 50 square feet. Building coverage, you know, we are pretty much, I think we're at 324, 324 square feet on the previous application. And we're close to that. I think, I think we're, it's almost a wash. I think maybe we're 320 on the previous and we're 324 on this one. You know, so it's maybe, so I guess we're maybe four square feet, building footprint coverage higher on this one. But the overall new square footage is down by over 200 square feet.
Rich. Luke Tashian speaking. Rich, the way you tucked the air conditioner in between the house and the garage and the breakfast nook in there, I mean, that's nice because, you know, you're keeping it within the foot. No one's really gonna see it there, I guess, now, in the footprint, but it's within the outline of the house. But that propane tank on the end is really, you know, sticking out there. And if you could bury a septic tank right next to it, how come you can't bury a propane tank?
It's a good question. You know, I don't know how they, to be honest, the propane tank's a bit bigger. I'm not sure exactly where the tank is. We have a general location. But yeah, just from what I can see, there's a lot of coastal erratics around the property. And the sense is, because the foundation is, there's no full basement, so all indications are that this is a tough one to bury anything in. It's kind of a slab-on-grade mainly structure. So we haven't really done any test holes to, no 100%, but from what we can just visually see, it doesn't look promising to get something in. I mean, I think probably, you know, if it was easy to do, we would do it, but I don't think it's gonna be easy to do it without, you know, blasting something out, you know?
They could probably hammer it out, you know, with a hydraulic hammer.
Yeah, it just, you know. We just felt like we could hide it, you know, we could plant it in and hide it and that side.
I mean, but it's like three feet from the property line there, though.
Right.
I mean, to have a giant tank like that three feet from the property line, no one likes those giant tanks, you know? That's a huge tank. How long is that tank? It's as long as your garage, almost.
Yeah, you know, it's, I think it's about, I wanna say 16 feet, 17.
That's a big tank.
But, you know, I think as far as view, I'm not sure the neighbor would have any, there's a lot of brush trees in between that side. I don't know if it would impact, you know, anyone but the Watsons, as far as seeing it. And on the other side, on the street side, we have, we have, you know, plant, you know, there's already existing plantings in a stone wall that kind of cover it too. So I don't know if you'd see it from outside the property.
I mean, I think for us to grant a variance for that because of a hardship related to the property, we need to know if it's a hardship related to the property and without you having, you know, if you dug there and you found out it was all ledge, that'd be one thing. But right now, seems like at most, we're just speculating and it seems like quite speculation to me when it's right next to, you know, leach field and the septic tank that are obviously underground.
It's hard, it's, it's hard to tell until you, makes me start scratching the surface of it. It just, just my, you know, from discussions with our builder and what I'm seeing, it just seems like it would be very a difficult thing to do.
This is Ben Bielis. How is the abutting landowner's house configured with respect to that boundary line where the propane tank is close?
I don't know exactly, and if they're setback quite a ways, because there's, you see, there's a wetland line. So there's a lot of wetland kind of between them, so they're not, they're not like on top of each other because of the, you know, it's built kind of on the other side. More, I would say, where it says now or formerly, it's just some approximating where they are, but that's roughly where their house is. And it's kind of, I think it's a little more aligned with the street, adjoining street.
Does this wetlands extend across the property line and follow the triangular hash marks? Sort of just extending north?
Right, yeah, it does continue onto the neighboring property. There's a swath of it that kind of keeps going right through.
So the house is on the west, northwest side of a wetland?
Right.
Well, doesn't seem like it's very dangerous.
It's not very close to the, to that property line, you know, it's, you know, again, because of the, there's a lot of wetlands between them.
Where could you put it?
Where else?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we can't put it really in the wetlands, so kind of the property is bisected by that. You know, definitely wouldn't want to have it in the front of the house.
You could put it off the south side. Off by the, where the patio is now.
Yeah, I suppose, I, you know, I have to say, I think that would probably be more in the view, if there was a view from the neighbor, that's probably where they could see it more than on the garage side, if that's a concern. Because they are, you know, again, kind of like, if you see where it says now or formerly, Peter Ogilvy, it's, the house is kind of on that side. So I think if any, if they have any view of the Watsons' property, it's kind of on that side. That's, you know, in a, in a, for the Watsons, it would be preferable to have, that's just, the north side of the property is a, is a side that they don't use. And it's hidden from their view as well.
That's where the septic field is and the septic tank and the utilities side of the property.
That's right, yeah.
That's why it makes me think you can dig there, you know? I remember when we visited this, you know, and it wasn't up to slot, but I just seemed like to ask to have a 17-foot-long tank, you know, there's really no way to hide it there when it's four feet from the line.
Is that your concern, Luke, that it's too visible?
Yeah, that, if it was buried, I'd have no, I mean, I have no problem with anything else. I think it's very tactful, the way they tuck the air conditioner in there in the breakfast nook and things like that. But I just feel like that is a massive propane tank. Those things, it's just, no one wants a gigantic propane tank right next to the property line.
Yeah, well, again, they, they're not like, the people aren't living next to the property line, but what about screening of some sort?
That, I don't see how they'd screen it because a lot of like, you know, woods and stuff there. It's not like screening's gonna grow in. I mean, they could put like a stockade fence or something, maybe, but I don't know. I don't think plantings would do anything.
Right, no, I wasn't thinking vegetation. I was thinking, you know, like crosshatched kind of greenish fence.
I'd be more comfortable, Ben, if they came and said it's, you know, ledge there or something, but we have no idea if they can or can't bury it. Just seems normally something that would make them, would make the person bury it.
Okay.
This is Becky Walsh. Richard, have you had any comments from the Ogilvy's about the tank?
I have not, no. As far as another in favor of the project in general, no, 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 any good comments that I know of.
Laura, Richard Keratou wants to speak and Mr. Watson also, one of the applicants, wants to speak.
Yes, Richard Keratou, let's go ahead.
Now, I wasn't clear. Why can't this be buried? Is there a reason why you're electing? Is there?
Yeah, the, the house itself was, is built on a slab, so there's, at the ledge, is really no, is a very small, very non-crawl space, crawl space. And there's also lots of, kind of great place, well, of radics and a lot of boulders on. From my experience, it, that's why we're not proposing any crawl space or basement on this project because we're all but certain we're gonna hit some ledge or fair amount of ledge on this just by, you know, the way the house is constructed. And then what we're seeing, it's coming out of the surface. There's a lot of ledge already.
Maybe the homeowner can help us with this understanding of the variance.
Yeah, this is Alex Watson. Sorry, I don't have my video on. I'm in the car. I had to pull over. I'm working. But the way we plan on putting that propane tank is, is that we're not just gonna, you know, drop it and leave it, you know? We do plan on putting a fence and, you know, correct vegetation on the property line so that the Ogilvy's won't even see it or know it's there. And also, if you stand in the Ogilvy's yard and look at our house, you can't see the propane tank from any of the living spaces unless you're standing in the garage. So it's not like it's gonna be an eyesore, sitting out in the open for people just to drive by and say, oh, there's a, you know, whatever gallon propane tank there. We are gonna screen it and shrub it in. And then also, the property is ledge. It's ledge and it's wetlands and, you know, burying a propane tank up there is just, it just doesn't seem feasible. You know, I talked to the past owners about the property. You know, I've talked to different contractors. I've talked to my septic company. And the ground up there is tough. You know, I would invite anybody to come up there and take a look. It's just, it would, it's just, it seems very difficult for us to be able to bury the propane tank when we can do something in a very, you know, tactful way, like you mentioned, Luke. You know, we've, we've thought long and hard about submitting these plans and where things would go. And, you know, we put the propane tank on several parts of the property and this was, seemed like the best spot at the end of the day, when we had it mapped out.
Well, Luke Tashian here. My problem is just it's so close to the line and just looks like you, at least you could have tried to see what's there because there's a septic tank and a leach field right there. And a septic tank's gonna be a lot, a lot bigger than this tank. If they buried that and there's a leaching field, it just seems like they could bury this.
Yeah, if we bury that, then we have to move our septic line because our septic line comes right underneath our garage there, right on the corner.
Well, where your tank is now, this lines off the corner. It looks like it would be out of the way on the plan.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm gonna, not, you know, say I'm disagreeing here, but it's just, I think it would, I understand what you're saying and I see it, but the land up there is, it's ledge and.
I mean, you have a septic line buried there. It just seems like you can dig there. That's just, it just doesn't add up to me.
Yeah, again, I hear you. I just, you know, I don't know.
This is Ben Bielis again. Were you the owner in 2016 when there was a variance granted for that garage?
I was not. I bought the house in the summer of 2016, right after those variances were granted.
So you're not familiar with what they encountered when they put in the foundation for the garage?
They, they didn't end up doing anything with the garage. They just pulled the variance, but then they moved out. They didn't actually act on any of their variances. Yeah.
So there's no garage there?
There is a garage, but it's the original structure that was with the house prior to 2000, you know, 1995 or. They were planning on swinging the garage out, I believe, in that variance and straightening it out because right now it sits at about a 40-degree angle on the house. So I think they were trying to straighten it out and move the pad. And they just, they just never ended up doing it. They just left it as is.
This is John Mahoney. That's my recollection as well of that design and it was much higher coverage than what's currently being discussed either now or in the fall.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we, the budget was a factor, but we took a look at the house and realized what we were doing to it didn't fit the lot. It was too much. And it was taking away from a lot of character of that kind of cottagey Turner Hill neighborhood. So that's one of the reasons also why we decided to kind of pull back on the renovation and, you know, dull it down a little bit. So when it comes to the propane tank, you know, that was a serious consideration. And, you know, we, we went with our builder and he said, yeah, you know, above ground is the best option. And so that's why we mapped it the way we did, you know? It's not like we just threw it on the map and said, okay, let's, let's go for it. I mean, it was a very thought-out plan, so.
And Alex, as you mentioned, it doesn't appear that the Ogilvy's can, can you bring their house, you know, as far, in that location? I think it's more visible, if we were to put it on the south side, it would be much more visible to them.
Yeah, if we were to put it on, if we were to put it on the south side, it would be visible from 15 Turner Hill. It would be visible from the Ogilvy's driving in their driveway out and from their, it would be visible from Laurel. So I'm not just saying this, but it would be, if we were to put it on the south side, it would, it would, it would, you know, everybody would see it as opposed to where we're tucking it. You know, the Ogilvy's have a chance of seeing it, but no one on the road or no other neighbors would even know it's there.
Only if they're on the, walking around on the property.
Yeah, or, or in the woods between, you know, the Ogilvy's and, I mean, there's a good 50 yards of woods between, you know, the Ogilvy's, you know, yard to their house and to where the propane tank would be.
It's pretty private.
I think it's, I think what you're saying is it would be more of a financial hardship for you in order to bury it. So I just feel like you should really consider burying it because I don't feel comfortable, I don't feel comfortable moving forward without it, without it being buried. I know that I've had experience with some ledgy land and it can be done. So I appreciate all the, you know, great work you've done and, and trying to keep within the character. But I think with burying it, it would be really keeping within the character, so.
Also, this is, just to note, if they put it on the south side, they have two front yards, one on Laurel Road and one on Turner Hill Road, and they have to be behind the house, essentially. They can't, so that probably went into their equation.
Luke Tashian speaking again. I agree with what Laura's saying.
I think it's just a financial hardship. It's not.
It's, it's not, it's not really a financial hardship, actually. It, not at all. But we just, again, we just, that's the best place for it, so.
Well, I'm not saying that you go a different place, but then it can bury it there or then do it there.
Question, this is Ben again. Can, can the applicants do some testing of that space where the propane tank is projected to go so we could get an idea of whether or not it's, it's a ledge or it's, as Luke has suggested, it might be just sort of like the septic area. And that way, we would have a little bit better informed decision. Anyplace else for it to go. And so if it's gonna go somewhere, I'm not quite sure what burying it does. We don't have a coverage issue and it's a matter, if it's too close to the sideline, will burying it solve that problem?
It's, I think it's a bad precedent to set, to keep.
But we don't have.
Above ground.
Yeah, I would agree that a buried propane tank is preferable, but what's our authority to say you can't have a variance unless you bury it? If either, you get a variance because there's a hardship. I think Luke is saying there's no hardship if it can be buried. And I'm not sure that, how that works exactly with the idea of we're supposed to decide whether or not there's a hardship. I think if there's a ledge there, we very often don't require somebody to blast it out.
And what Laura was saying is they don't have to blast it. They can hammer it. They hammer stuff with excavators all the time when it's in stone like that. It's a common thing.
So it's not a hardship.
Or it's, we don't even know if there's a hardship to start with. And the second thing is, can they do it?
That's, I agree with you. And I think that's why we should have some, a little testing done. Doesn't have to be elaborate, you know? But have some idea of whether or not we're talking about there's two feet before you hit rock or 10 feet.
Well, I mean, there's a good chance it's very ledgy there. I do know the property, but it can be done.
Again, I'm not sure how we get the right, this has to be done. I mean, I suppose we just say, no, you can't have your variance and no propane tank. But if you know that it's a ledge, all right, all right, let's, I won't berate it.
Luke Tashian speaking. Lynn, do we, does it not, doesn't it, isn't there an exception for buried tanks within a setback? Like, doesn't it not even count? Isn't there an exception where it's allowed?
Buried tanks don't count for the setbacks. It doesn't have. There is an exception in 3.7 where the zoning inspector can grant, if they see hardship with the topography in the land, you can, structures like a generator, transformer, propane tank, we can relax the setbacks administratively.
See, so Luke Tashian again. Ben, that's what I was saying. So they wouldn't even need a variance if it was buried. If it was buried, they would just do it as a right.
Right, that's a good point. That's a good point. We wouldn't have to give an allowance on it at all if.
And we prefer to not have to grant it.
Well, that's why I think we ought to hold it over until we know whether they can bury it.
So you, how do you, would you like to proceed, Richard, or would you want us to vote on this? Or would you, do you want to, us to hold it over and rethink it? Or how would you, how'd you like to proceed?
Well, when you say hold it over, is there a way to hold just the propane tank over and then vote on the rest of the project or is it all or nothing? vote on the rest of the project? Or is it all or nothing? I don't know what, I'm not sure how you can do it.
Lynn?
What?
Could we, uh?
There are separate variance requests, so why couldn't we vote on the ones that are not um, subject to a discussion?
It's one application.
It's what application? So it's?
It's multiple variance requests that were action. You'd have to keep the application open or, um,
Right.
Or make a decision.
Well, I could see we, we keep it open.
Well, let's let the applicant decide that, Ben.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would say, I mean, uh, it's good to defer to my clients also, but you know, if, if that was going to keep us from, um, getting a vote tonight, um, I think that's, that's a different situation. If there's a way to do it with a contingency, you know, or, um, I guess if there's a way to say, you know, uh, uh, some kind of a conditional approval or just, you know, on that propane tank. I, I guess that's something for you guys to decide.
I guess we could vote if there's a condition that the tank is buried. Uh, I mean, if you want to, you know, commit to that, that's, uh.
And this is John Mahoney. And then what I guess they'd have to, if they found they couldn't do it, they'd have to come back, correct? For a modification on that piece of it.
You couldn't bury the tank.
Well, what, what would be a reason they couldn't bury the tank?
Well, I, I guess that's right. At some point you blast it out or whatever needs to happen.
What, I mean, there, there's, I'm just a little confused as I feel like we're being like pressured into either, you know, do the tank or don't get the variance. And it, it's not really a hardship though. It's, that's what my, I'm, I'm having a tough time understanding that. I feel like it's maybe aesthetics. And if it was aesthetics, uh, I feel like my neighbors would have, who I've talked to them about that would have brought it up and no one's here challenging it or you know, everybody's fine with it. And it just seems like it's, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't know.
Well, I'll take a stab at it. Ben, this is Ben Byless again. In order for us to grant any of these and all of these variances, we have to find that there's a hardship that runs with the land. And it probably applies in the other, all the other, the side setbacks and that sort of thing. We don't know that there's a hardship connected to the placing of this propane tank so close to the side, uh, property line. It might be a hardship if it's all, you know, stone. But just asking now to put it on, on, on top of the ground and, and so close to the side property line that you need a variance, there's no hardship in the ZBA sense of the word.
Yeah. Um, well, it just seems like regardless if there's a hardship or not, I'm going to have to bury it. That's what I'm confused about. It just seems like whether there's ledge or whether there's anything, I'm going to be forced to bury it.
I, I wouldn't agree with that. I, I would be willing to consider whether or not the cost of burying it is exorbitant and that's efficient to.
Well, we, we don't, we don't do it on, uh, cost, Ben.
Exactly. It's not on cost. It's not financial. So it's like, you know, it's either, you know, that's, that's how I'm seeing it is either bury the tank or not. So, you know, bury the tanker or no variance is kind of what I'm hearing here because of aesthetics. So. Am I wrong?
Okay. What would you like to do? Would you like to move on? Uh, would you like us to vote or would you like to carry it over?
I just, I don't know, you know, I don't know what the best option is here because, you know, again, we just want, we want to start building our house. We want to get back into the house and we want to. So I just, I don't know if this will be pushed back another month or another two months or however long. I just, I don't, I really don't know what the best option is here. So.
Um, Laura, this is Becky Walsh. Can I just ask one question? My map is so small. Is that propane tank in, in the wetlands area? And would they need permission to bury it in the wetlands area from?
No, it's in.
Kathleen Holland?
I don't, I, from my map, I don't think so. What do you think, Lynn?
Um, I do, I don't, um, I could pull it up again. I know, I do know that no matter what, whatever they do on the site, they do need to seek an, um, uh, uh, they need to submit an application to in the wetlands if they're successful with a variance tonight. Um, wetlands held off from requiring a, uh, application in advance, but they, they do need to seek a application.
So if we granted the variance and then, uh, wetland says, no, you can't bury the tank, then what, what happens then?
Well, you could write the, um, condition so that, you know, if it's loud, they bury it. Or you could say, you know, if there's um, reason for it not to be buried, then, um, it's not buried. I mean, there's a, administratively staff can also, um, allow the propane tank above ground when there's some serious topographical issues to be closer than the setback. And within the setback for, um, it's under, it's in 3.7 where, um, the zoning inspector could actually just administratively, um, grant that right if they try to put it wherever they put it and, um, could just say it can't, it can't work there.
So, so Laura, could we grant the variance with those, with a condition like that?
Well, I, I'm not following what the condition was with, with the.
That, that if, if it goes through the wetlands approval um, and they say that it administratively, that what Lynn said, you know, that it couldn't be buried there, that they wouldn't have to. They could put it above ground.
Mm-hmm. Well, I guess that then we'd be throwing it to wetlands. Is that it? I guess it would depend on what wetland said, like we would condition it that it would be buried and then it depends on what wetland's saying. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the, the issue is also if, if, if it's, can a tank even be put on wetlands? Even if you can't bury it because it's in wetlands, can a tank physically be on top of wetlands?
It's not, it's not right in the wetlands. I guess it's in the buffer, I guess, but it's not, um, wetlands have flags. It's not like, it wouldn't be sitting right in wetlands. It would be in the buffer area.
It's called the review area.
Yeah.
So you do something there, they have the right to review it. And if they think it's going to affect the, the wetlands, they can have the right to tell you to do something different to reduce or mitigate the effect on the wetlands.
Right.
What do you think, Jessica?
Um, I do think that while there's been repeated conversation about ledge and pointing to the septic tank, a septic line is not as deep as burying a tank. And if you go straight into granite, that's not the same as ledge. Um, and based on the fact that they have the two front yards, I think that's really significant. They don't have a lot of options where they could put this to begin with. So I would be somewhat in line with Becky's proposal, which would be that we could say that due to the two front yards of the lot and the wetlands, that there is a hardship, but basically say that the hardship is really conditioned on the wetlands prohibiting them from being able to bury the propane tank. I mean, the only other question I had is, does the propane tank need to be that large for what they're trying to achieve?
Not at all. It doesn't. That was just what we mapped out. You know, that's a, a 1200, this is Alexander, by the way. It's a 1200 gallon or whatever tank. You know, that's just what our contractor recommended, you know? We only want to be filled up once a year. I have no problem, you know, dropping a 500 gallon tank, which is what 10 feet long?
Right. You know, that is another, I, that was a question Rich carried to again. I mean, you could get propane tanks from 100 gallon all the way up to 2000.
Exactly. I'm not, I'm not, that's not, that tank isn't, you know, the tank that we have our like hearts set on. We, we have no problem putting two smaller tanks or one tank or, you know, that's just the area that, you know, we think is the best fitted as, as far as aesthetics and as purpose goes for the tanks. The thousand was just recommended from our contractor to map it there. So maybe we put a condition or something about a smaller tank or.
Yeah, it's Rich carried to again. What is the propane going to be used for? Is it?
The whole house, uh, heating, we're switching, we're taking out oil and we're, we're switching it all over to high efficiency heating, water, everything. So we're, we're.
Okay. Yeah. Just a discussion for the committee. You know, propane is, I understand that. Thank you. You know, propane is not an absolute necessity to have a house. I mean, if, unless you can't have an oil tank because you can't put an oil tank in the basement. I mean, some people have propane, some people don't. Um, you know, is it a hardship? I mean, what happens? A lot of homes don't have propane.
We don't, to your point, we don't have a basement and we, um, because of the ledge, um, so there's no existing basement and we're not proposing one. So that, right now the oil tank is, um, out. It's outside, but that's not a great thing because you have to put additives in it and, um, so it doesn't freeze.
Luke Tashin speaking. I had an oil tank outside my house and I never had to put additives in it. You know, we recently connected natural gas, but it just sat on my patio. It wasn't a very big thing.
Luke, how, how, Laura, and Luke, how would you feel if the tank was smaller?
I, I, I don't know. I, I feel like as a starting point, we just don't have enough information to, to, to know what's, what's in the ground there. Because even if it was smaller, if, if they could, if, if they can bury it, I'd say, well, bury it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess Luke, I'm sorry, this is John Mahoney. I, I'm hearing conflicting things about what, I've heard bury it, you know, it can be done regardless. And I've heard, we don't know whether it can be buried realistically, meaning is it financially feasible or reasonable? And if we just want them to bury it, then we ought to move ahead. If we want to do additional investigation or there's something short of that, either smaller tank or smaller tank with screening or some combination, then we can make it, you know, we, there at least two of those scenarios that we can decide tonight. And one, we'd have to ask the homeowner to go back and do investigations. And I'm not quite sure where the board is on that. I mean, I for one am, am, you know, smaller tank and, and appropriate screening would be fine with me, I think. But, but I recognize I'm not, you know, other people have other, have concerns as well. Different concerns or feel more strongly about the tank.
Uh, Luke Tashin speaking. In response to your comment, I think if they went to wetlands and wetland said, we're not going to allow a buried tank in the upland review area, then I would say that there's a hardship and it has to be above ground. And then I'd say we need to minimize the effects. So it should be a smaller tank. But, but if they, but if the tank can be buried, I think it should be buried. I think the only reason it wouldn't be buried is if wetland says it can't. And if it can't be buried, then we need to look at the size of it and determine, is this really necessary to have a tank that's 17 feet long? I mean, that's longer than a car. That's a big tank.
You know, the issue, if you're using the propane for heating, you're going to need, I mean, practically, I'm not an expert here, but you know, you need at least 500 gallons, you know, to, to use it for heating. You know, maybe the committee want to consider, uh, you know, if it can't be buried, then the tank cannot be more than 500 gallons is one option for the committee to consider.
Madam Chair? There's also, there's also a distance requirement in the state health code from the septic to the propane tank of 10 feet and, um, their well, which is on the other side in the south butt side, it's kind of moot, but their distance is 25 feet. So that might've also been a location that they picked because of those restrictions.
But does that mean it can't be buried because of that?
Um, it can't have to be 10 feet from the, the septic.
And so now it's 25?
25 from the well, which is on the other side. It's on the, the well, I believe is, is on the south side of the property. So that's probably not, so a little bit of an issue for this location, but it has to be 10 feet from the septic.
Lynn, Luke Tashin speaking, but it's 10 feet anyway. So it has to be 10 feet whether it's buried or not buried.
Yes. I mean, I'm not the expert, but there's, there is a distance requirement from the septic in the state health code and um, our department of health will make the move up if they need to.
Lynn, but my question was, is 10 feet whether it's buried or not buried? Is that correct?
That's distance, yes. That's the state health since from the septic is going to most likely be 10, I believe it's 10 feet. Yes. If it's buried or not buried. That's a distance requirement.
So where they have it now, it is 10 feet?
I don't know. There's no measurement drawn for it. Um,
It is 10 feet. We measured.
It is 10 feet.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. We measured from the top of the well or top, sorry, top of the septic to where the tank would be is more than 10 feet.
All right. Well, I don't know if the, if the board is prepared to make a vote. I, I personally don't feel like we have enough information to, to move forward with it. Um, uh, I feel like we may need to hold this over.
What's the action we're asking of the homeowner?
Well, Lynn, wait, could they go to wetlands first?
Um,
Before, why would we vote on something if they're going to have, if it would just be, uh, reviewed by wetlands? Um, so they would have to come back again. Shouldn't they go to wetlands first?
Well, wetlands doesn't, if they can't get the variance, wetlands doesn't want to deal with it because if they get it, if they give them a, uh, if they give them an approval at wetlands and they come to you and get a variance and you change the, um, scope of the project or where things are located, they have to go right back to wetlands for another approval. The wetlands only wants to see them once. And they want to see the final project, what it's going to look like.
Uh, Luke Tashin speaking. So I guess it sounds like there's two things on table. Option one, we either approve it with the buried tank. And if wetlands has a problem with it, then they'd have to come back here. Or option two, we approve it with no tank. Or I guess the third option is we hold it open for them. So, I mean, we can approve it without the tank there. Or we could approve it with a buried tank, but I don't think they have the votes to approve it without the tank how it is. I mean, with the tank how it is.
Even with a smaller tank.
Not without calculating?
No.
All right.
So did you want to hold it over or did you want us to vote?
Uh, well, if you're going to vote, you're not going to, you're not going to pass it. So I guess we have to do a holdover. Right?
Unless you want, if you, unless you're making a commitment to bury it.
Oh, no, I'm not going to commit to bury it until I can go to my own property and dig and see that there's ledge there. And then I guess, um, yeah. So.
But remember the cost of the ledge is not, it wouldn't be considered a hardship.
I understand that.
It sounds like to me, Lynn, Luke Tashin speaking, we could approve it. I just don't want them to be, you know, waiting unnecessarily long. We could approve it without the septic tank. And then if they decide to bury it, they don't even have to come back to us again. If they go there and they can't bury it, then they have to come back to us, explain it to us. And then we maybe then decide a smaller one. So we could approve the application without the tank and it wouldn't slow them down.
What do you mean without the propane tank?
Yeah, we, we assume the application without the propane tank because they don't need a variance for the propane tank if it's buried. Then if they can bury the propane tank, they just finish the project. If they can't bury the propane tank, then I think they'd have to come back here with a proposal of what they're going to do regarding the propane tank, which would probably be a smaller propane tank and it's screened somehow.
Okay. So then how do we, so that would be changing the application though, isn't it? So.
I'm saying they would need a new application. I'm saying they submit the, we'd vote on the application now approving of the changes other than the septic, other than the, uh, propane tank. And then they can go forward with their project. If they could then bury the propane tank or if they decide that, that they don't want to, you know, have an excavator come in to hammer out the ledge, then they could then reapply and we decide then what to do about it. But they don't need, if they can bury the propane tank, I don't think we need to approve it as part of the variance because they, it doesn't encroach in the setbacks. It's not counted.
So do we just leave, Lynn, can we just leave that? I thought you said we can't leave that off or?
Well, they just, uh, like withdraw that piece of the variance from their application because their application is, it's one application or the entire variance with credit.
Well, couldn't we submit a, uh, an approval subject to dropping that?
What do you, what do you mean?
In other words, we, we propose modify, I, I think propose modifications in motions all the time. So somebody would make a, a motion that we approve the, uh, variance. So somebody would make a motion that we approve the variance as submitted with the exception of an above-ground propane tank.
But their request is, is there.
Well, I guess we could, we could ask the homeowner, homeowner if they would let us to approve portion of the application, but withdraw the portion of the propane tank until we can get either further investigating, or they can decide to bury it.
Yeah, let's withdraw, I guess we'll do that. Because we want to, we have our builder and materials are sitting ready to go. So we want to get started. So we'll, we'll remove the propane tank and most likely just have to bury it. I mean, we're trying to avoid that. It's not a financial hardship. We'll bury, I mean, it's, if that's, if that's what's needed to get the variance, burying a smaller propane tank there, you know, we'll do it. But, you know, we're just.
Okay, so it sounds like they're going to withdraw that portion right now.
Yeah, we'll withdraw the portion about the, the propane tank and keep the other.
Is the board comfortable with that? Them withdrawing that portion? Okay, so could someone make a, a motion?
Is there, Luke Tashen speaking, is anyone for or against us? Any, anyone in the audience?
Oh, okay. Yes, is anyone here to speak in favor of this variance? Is there anyone here to speak?
Well, hold on, everyone's muted. So hold on, let me unmute them one at a time. Chip Newton, are you here to speak on this application?
Is there anyone here that is here to speak in favor of this variance?
Wait a second, because I have to unmute everyone to get that answer. I can't get it.
Can't they just raise their hands?
They could, but if they have no video.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Are you here to speak for the, for this application?
No, I'm with Grace Farms.
Oh, okay, thanks, sorry.
Is there anyone here that's here to speak against this variance?
Nope. Carla Watson, do you want to speak, or?
I just, I just want to say similar to what my husband said. I couldn't unmute myself for a little minute there. So, we're anxious to get started on this project. Obviously, we can't, we're not sober. And we had to step back on the project for a variety of reasons. So we appreciate the time. We are very anxious. And if this means, if it is about just visually, because people don't want to see this thing, then we'll obviously, we're willing to work with that. But at the same time, we are very anxious to get started. And that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just wait one more second. Mark Matic, are you here for this application as well?
No, I am here for 17th seminar.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're going to go, is there any, any last, Richard or Alexander, anything else that you wanted to add last?
No, none for me. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing further for me either.
Okay, we're going to go into the business session. So no more questions. Okay, can I hear, the board, do you? Is there, can someone make a motion?
Luke Tashen, I'd move that due to the topographer, you have the lot and the shape of it and other hardships that we would allow the application with the propane tank removed.
From the application?
Correct.
Can I have anyone to second that?
Mahoney seconds.
Okay, we'll start the voting, all the regular members. Jessica, can you start the vote?
Harkin in favor.
Luke?
Tashen in favor.
I'm in favor. I'm voting in favor.
John?
Mahoney in favor.
Okay, Edmonds in favor. Your variance is granted?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are going to go on to 171 Richmond Hill. That zoning variance upon the application of, is it March hazer LLC owners for a variance of section 3.5E and 7.1B to allow for an expansion into the side yard setbacks, where 14.9 feet is provided in lieu of the 25 feet required, and where 22.9 feet is provided in lieu of the 25 feet required for property in the one acre zone, map K blocks 16, lots 6, 14. Is there, who is here to speak for 171 Richmond Hill?
Craig and Wendy Lynch.
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
Okay, we are proposing a 14-foot addition on the wall to the rear end of the property.
Wait, I'm going to mute one of you because you're next to each other.
I'm good.
Oh.
Sorry.
A 14-foot addition out the rear, the north side of the property. It would extend 14 feet further north. It would be, reach from corner to, existing corner to existing corner of the existing, obviously, structure. It's two floors. And in the front, we're proposing removing the existing exterior stoop and enclosing about three and a half feet of that, and still using about five feet of that existing coverage as, as the new stoop. Now, what we've got here is a lot that's under 9,000 square feet in a one acre zone, severely constricting what can be built there, which is essentially, by today's standards, I guess, nothing. But we're not, we're not encroaching any further into the existing setbacks. So primarily, the hardship is simply a 9,000 square foot lot in a one acre zone. And we're proposing to remove about 400 square feet and just simply net out and only adding about 300 additional square feet to the coverage.
Luke Tashen speaking. It's not a coverage issue though, right? It's a setback issue, or do you also need variances from coverage?
No, no coverage issue, just setbacks.
Does the board have questions?
I, I'm looking through all the different images right now, so I don't want to take, there's a lot of like hand drawings, so it's kind of hard to follow some of them.
The area is probably the most straightforward.
So this is Becky Walsh. Are you, are the setbacks changing from the, the current structure? This is not within the setbacks to begin with, is that correct?
The current structure is within the setbacks.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's hard to tell from the map.
Well, there's only about a 10-foot swath of buildable property down the center of this property.
Luke Tashen speaking. It's obviously a ton of work. Went into this by applicant and drawing these out, but this is really hard without an architectural drawing to, to distill into something that I could allow or not allow.
Isn't that reasonably obvious on the survey that shows, you know, where the setbacks are in the proposed building structures?
Well, the setbacks aren't the only issues. You know, there's a lot of other issues besides the, the footprint, you know, that we determined setbacks. You know, like, like the volume height, things like that. The height halfway up, they have to measure. There's a lot of other.
That's all in the survey.
Well, this is John Mahoney. I, I'm confused looking at the survey where the existing building line is. Building envelope. I see part of it on the east side of the house. I'm not sure where the west side is. So when I'm looking at these two proposed new areas, both in the front and in the back, I don't know how they line up to the existing floor plan and building.
Yeah, granted, it is a little vague. And that hand that's just went around the perimeter is, is the existing structure. That's the existing structure right there. Right there, keep going, and then back, a little bump there, and over, exactly. That's existing structure right there.
I'm, I'm sorry, Luke, do it again. Lynn, I would.
Okay, I'm going to start right here.
Yeah.
That's the garage.
Correct.
And then it's going to come around.
That's all one, one-story garage.
And it comes here, and then it kind of hooks around.
That's, that's all existing, that's correct.
And then the proposed is what's in bold. So they, they carry it out to the, the line of the house that's already in the setback, and they carry it to the distance it already is at, which is 14.9.
Mm-hmm.
At its closest point, the existing structure is 6.3. And remember that the setbacks that are on here are the one acre zone setbacks, not the B-zone. So if their house was right here to the east, it would be B-zone. But their house starts the one acre zone. So the buildable area on the lot is this small rectangle in the center based on the setback lines.
Yes, thank you, Lynn.
No problem.
But they need elevation variances too, Luke Tashen speaking, because of the mid roof elevation?
They, they didn't request it. So one would assume that it is compliant, but they did not make a request for that. They've, they've shown on the survey that they're going to be under. And their, their total proposed is going to be 23, where allowable is 40. And the allowable building height is 35, and they're proposing 20.1. And their coverage is under. They're allowed 20, 2,115, and they're proposing with the additions to have 1,814.
So Lynn, to Luke's question, particularly on the sort of northeast side, do we have that step back issue, not setback, but step back at the, between the first and second floor? Or are we okay?
Well, they're in the one acre, so don't think, let's see. It doesn't apply. It would only, it would apply, it only starts to apply in the one-half acre. They're actually in the one acre zone, so it's moot. Even if their lot is the size of a B-zone lot.
And if they were in the, well, if they were in the B-zone lot, would we have that issue or not?
If they were in a B-zone lot, then they'd have to be, it would already be pre-existing, but they'd have to be, the setback would run between 15 and 25 feet for the, no, it's eight to 16 feet, sorry. So it would run just slightly.
Okay.
It would be like here, but it's already existing. It already sits in there.
Lynn, Luke Tashen speaking, but I mean, it seems like quite the ask to allow them to do more than they would be allowed to do in a B-zone. Here, which we'd be allowing them to do because of that mid roof height along that section of the proposed addition.
But they're not in the B-zone. They're in the one acre zone. So their zone.
I know, but I'm, but I'm saying if their argument is, is they're right next to the B-zone, and they're the first lot in the A-zone, then they shouldn't get any more leeway than they would if they were a lot in the B-zone. Because we're saying they're undersized from one acre, but they're next to a B-zone. So we should try to make them consistent with the B-zone. We shouldn't make it easier than the B-zone.
But the, but their zone is not the B-zone. You have to judge them on the one acre zone, because that's the zone they're in.
I know, but Lynn, but what I'm saying though is, if their argument is, is where the first lot that's in the one acre zone, and next to us is all B-zone, well then, I'm saying that argument falls apart if their proposal is not consistent with what's allowed in either the A or the B-zone, which is what, what it sounds like they have.
There's no A-zone. They're in, they're in the one acre zone.
I mean, the one acre, not the A-zone, the one acre.
They go from one acre to, so they're the first lot in the one acre zone, and they're, this is the B-zone. But you can't judge them on the B-zone, because they're not in the B-zone. They're in the one acre zone.
Yeah.
No, I know, but I understand what you're saying, is that they should be at least, if, if they were in the B-zone, they should be at least compliant to the B-zone requirements.
Exactly, that's what, Rich, that's what I'm saying. We can't.
I understand. So, so Lynn, what he's saying is that if this situation was in the B-zone, would they be compliant?
They'd have to, they'd have to be at the, that between, the setback change would have to be between eight and 16 feet. So they'd have to be like a little more than one foot back. The house is already existing at 14.9, so they're already in it a little bit.
Okay, by a foot, right?
Just over, yes.
Okay. So Luke, am I reading it right? So if they were, if they had to meet the B-zone requirements, they're, you know, they're within a foot away, I guess.
That's what, Luke Tashen speaking, that's what I was saying. So the new addition, which has to step, should step back, you know, a little over one foot.
Craig Lynch here. Again, we're in the one acre zone. I don't know why you're, you're pushing the, the B-zone regs on the one acre zone. I don't follow that.
The issue is, what I'm saying is that, you're saying you're undersized, and you're the first, and you're the first lot.
I'm not, I never said I was the first one. That, it is true, but it's one acre zone, plain and simple.
Right, but I think it's rich carried too. What we're trying to say is that the one acre zone, the requirements are more strict than the B-zone, correct? So we're trying to give you the benefit of saying that if you were in the B-zone, your restrictions would be, would be less. So we're trying to help you out.
Correct. That's what I'm saying here, is that the one acre zone, they don't fit, you know, so it's trying to be more flexible here. Apparently, that's not appreciated.
It wasn't recognized.
And I have a question. Lynn, would the plans that are submitted here, if, if they were put in front of the building department, would they be, would they be approved on the way they are at this moment?
I don't know. And that's up to you whether or not you want to accept them or require a, you know, licensed professional. So I think this, this came up once before, and the previous chair had asked me to go back to the applicant soon after I started here and get a more professional plan before it was brought before you. But they can submit that.
I just think it's hard to see that, you know, what we're approving or not approving. I mean, I'm looking at the big screen and I just feel like it sets up for the homeowner to, you know, make a mistake, or for them having to come in front of the board once again for an after-the-fact variance. And I just, I just think it's setting all of us up for something that could be avoided.
I agree. This is Becky Walsh. I think in general, we usually approve variances as per plans submitted, but I wouldn't be able to approve these plans because they're a little confusing to me. a little confusing to me.
Fair enough.
So would you like to, again, hold it, we could, what we could do is hold this over, and you can come back to the board once again, once you have plans and make some adjustments, and you can come back again and resubmit this. Is that something that sounds feasible to you?
Oh, is that my only option essentially?
Or we could vote on it, and I'm not sure. I, I don't have a read for the board. I can't, I don't know if your variance would be granted based on what your plans that have been submitted, so.
If we were to submit new plans, so I would have to meet the setbacks for the B-zone along the east side there?
Yeah, why don't we talk about the changes that you could potentially make, or how the board would feel about if these plans were submitted in a different manner, how we would, if they were presented to us differently, how we, what we would think of it then. So just to save the homeowner some energy and, you know, does the board have thoughts on if this were proposed differently? Or on a different scale, I should say?
Laura, Luke Tash speaking. I, I mean, I think that's too broad of a question to really answer. But in a vague standpoint, like I was saying, to try to create some flexibility for the applicant, I would, I, I wouldn't say I would grant it or not grant it, because again, I don't have the plans in front of me. But something that I think would be something I'd consider would be if this complied with the requirements of the B-zone, and he's right next to it, I think for consistency of the neighborhood and things like that, it might be some, it would probably at least weigh in his favor.
Okay.
But to ask for more than that, I think would probably weigh against, against him. But again, I'm not making a decision either, either way.
Sure.
Yeah, Rich Carritu, I agree. If the homeowner goes back, and if he's able to, be able to get within that one-foot requirement of the B-zone, at least they could come back and argue that, hey, we meet all the B-zone requirements, which are less restrictive than the one acre, but we're right next door. I think that would be viewed favorable. However, if that one foot is, you know, easier said than done, then that's a decision they need to make when they come back.
Okay, so you have two ideas from two board members. Anyone else want to jump?
It's John Mahoney. I certainly would like to see what's going on, on the eastern elevation, which is the same area that Luke has expressed concern about. I don't know yet how I feel about whether they need to meet the B-zone or not, although I certainly respect my colleagues' concern. But at the very least, I'd like to see the elevations of the, well, I'd like to see better drawings all the way around. I agree with everybody there. My biggest area of focus is the eastern elevation, where the bulk of the building is going on and going on up two stories.
I follow.
So you're taking notes, right, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, I am. I threw them in. Thank you.
Luke Tash, again, is the garage, is it like three cars in a straight line, or how does it?
It actually is, yeah. There's a garage door on either end, for whatever reason, and it's, it's almost three cars deep, yes.
Okay.
Hmm. Little odd.
What's the title of the aerial view again? On the file, I'm trying to find it again.
Oh.
Oh, I think I put, I think I put drone view on it.
Drone view?
Let's see, it listed here, so.
Is that one of the ones that Gabe sent over, Lynn? It's on this computer.
Roof view, maybe?
It could be roof view, yeah.
Roof view, I think it is.
Sorry.
So on your roof view, that blue line, is that, that says, blue line indicates extension of existing roof overhang. So that roof line's gonna stay the same where it's blue, or is it gonna extend more there?
It's, it's currently, there's zero overhangs around the entire perimeter of the home. I was going to add a six-inch overhang at the heaves.
That's something they should show on your plans. I don't think it's necessarily decisive either way, but that clarifies a question ahead.
By the way, for my fellow board members, one thing to keep in mind, too, is that this lot is even narrower for the B-zone. It's 13 feet narrower than the minimum width for the B-zone even. The lot appears to be 62 feet wide. And minimum lot width on the B-zone is 75 feet. So as we think about whatever is going on, we should remember that as well.
And how does that, how does that, with the three-story addition, how, well, there's the...
Well, I think it's, well, again, that's where, it says here on the survey, it's a two-story addition, so.
That's all it is, yeah.
Three.
You know, we're talking about a foot of problem with the second-story setback, Laura. You know, if the, if the lot is already narrow by 13 feet, we might, you know, we, we could feel differently about that. We might be more lenient. And I'm not speaking for myself or anybody else.
Luke Tash is speaking. I agree with John and Rich on this point. Like, I'm not saying they have to move back that foot. I'm just saying that's something that would count in their favor if, when they have their plans, if it, you know, maybe it works the way they have it now. I don't know.
Right.
I don't have an answer to that, is what I'm saying. All I'm saying is that it's hard to grant them something that's more lenient than in the B-zone.
Right. So it's Rich Carritu. So my advice with the homeowners is they should go back and look what it would take to reduce it by that foot. If it's an undue hardship, then at least, you know, you could come back and say that you tried, and it's just gonna require X, Y, and Z. It's not feasible. So I think, again, no guarantee, but that would go away with me anyway on the committee, that you looked into reducing it a foot, but it just did not make sense for X, Y, and Z reason. At least it would help.
Luke Tash is speaking, too. I think anything that reduces the setback, I mean, anything that increases the setback. Sorry, I'm saying that backwards. Anything that makes the setback less than it is now is, I think, a problem because already, you know, within the setback, so at least the addition is parallel to the building, where the roof line above the garage and the, I don't know what it is on the first floor, but on the east-lee side, where that roof line's getting a little closer to the property line. Again, we, I think when they talk to the architect, that's probably something that they want to avoid. I don't think they want to be getting closer to the property lines if they can avoid it. I mean, if the house ends up looking ridiculous because there's no roof overhang once they redo it, maybe that's something we'd consider. But I mean, I think they want to maximize, I don't think they want to reduce side setbacks any more than absolutely necessary. Why, you know, keeping the two-story addition parallel with the house is not terrible to me. For sticking up past the house, I'd say they really should talk to the architect about not doing that.
Okay. So for the homeowners, so we will be, did you, are you saying that you would like to hold this over?
Yes.
You would like to hold it open. Okay, Lynn, do we need to vote on that, or?
No, we can, you can hold it over. You can, you can continue the item.
Okay, so we are officially continuing the item.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
So they need to go back to you, Lynn, after they come back, after they redo their plan?
Okay. So you guys can give me a call tomorrow in the office, and I can give you details of, if you want to go to the next month's meeting when I need your plans by.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Take care.
You, too.
Okay, the next item.
What's your question?
Next item on the agenda, 17. Say that, Suwannee Lane? Say it again.
Suwannee, I think.
I've lived here for 25 years and cannot say the name of that. I'm sorry.
Some say Suwannee, some say Siwannee.
Okay, Siwannee Lane. Lovely street, been there many times. Siwannee Lane zoning variance. Upon application of Sharon, is it Gurney?
Gurney.
Trustee owners for a variance of sections 3.5E, 2, to allow an expansion into the side yard setback, 12.3 feet is proposed, where 25 feet is required for property in the one acre and B resident zone, map P, block 41, lot N64. Okay. Is there, are the homeowners here to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Megan, would you start on your PowerPoint?
Sure. So I, we're the applicants. This is the owner, my mom, Sharon, and Mark Maydeek is our architect, who will be presenting.
Lynn, I think you have to unmute.
I think he needs to be unmuted.
I'm gonna mute him in a second. I just want to have everything up so I can share it. Sorry. There you go, Mark.
Okay, hello. Thank you for the introduction. There's one small correction, Laura, that I just wanted to point out. And actually, it's sort of, it, it's important to our application, but you actually said that we're requesting relief from the side setback. We are requesting relief from the front yard setback. It looks like the side.
No, no, it's the side yard. If you look at our regulations, I corrected that. It's a side yard setback.
So the side yard setback is the 25 feet?
Yeah, I can show you the, I can pull the section for you to look at. I looked at that very closely, but I corrected that on your application because it's, hold on a If you were to look at section 2.2 for yard setback, and you were to look at the rear lot example, it exactly mimics your lot, and it shows that that is the side yard, and your front yard would actually be facing your driveway. So it's, that's, it's your side yard setback you're seeking a variance of.
Okay. What's the required distance, then?
You know, you're in the, well, you got the one acre and the B-zone split, and you follow the one acre, and your one acre side yard setback is
Okay. Okay. But if it were a B-zone, normal side yard setback, that would be the eight feet, right?
Eight feet, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then we got that clarified, I think. So my name is Mark Maydeek. I'm the architect for Sharon and Megan on their addition. The reason for starting the project is the, they're, right now in the house, there's a married couple, a young, with a young son and their mother, or their mother-in-law, depending on how you look at it. It's, it's currently a bit small for that size, and they're hoping to expand that, at which point it really does become too small for that many people. So in an effort to be considerate and expand in a most minimal fashion, we explored options going east, west, north, and south. We came up with the option that we are presenting today, which we feel was the best direction and the most modest to accomplish their goals, and also maybe impact the setbacks, which, if you look at the PowerPoint presentation, you can see are pretty limited once you consider the setbacks of the, from the buffer, sorry, the buffer, from the wetlands and the setbacks as they apply. The property is in a B and A, B and one acre zone. So the, it actually straddles both. The property goes right down the middle. So if we can maybe look at some of the other slides, we can look at some of the conditions that exist there that affect this. The, we are requesting that the variance, that a relief from the setback from 25 feet to 12. And if you look at the plans, it kind of makes sense why, why we're requesting that. But we can also now look at the, well, again, some of these more conditions that do affect our application. And the first, and perhaps the most pressing is the wetlands. There, it actually, the five-mile river, in fact, runs right through the property, nearly bisecting in half. There's, there's a sort of flattish area to the east that we can't touch because the river. And then there's, there's a 50-foot setback off of that wetlands. The river basically is the wetlands. There's no additional wetlands property. So it's 50 feet off of the river, runs right through the existing house. There's a sewer easement, which actually prevents anything to the east regardless. It actually would prevent a bit going to the north as well, but mostly to the east adjacent. If you look at the plot plans, what's going on there. And then less, less of a concern, but there is ledge kind of toward the back, so it doesn't, it doesn't really impact this, our request, but there is, it does grade up around the corner, and there is, does appear to be ledge below, right below where we start digging. So if you look at the next slide, which is the, yeah, so a picture of the, that's the river running as it exists on the property, and the homeowners have a nice bridge that go over. It's actually really beautiful. There's a bridge that goes from the main part of the property to the other side, which we can't build on, but crosses the river. Really, actually quite quaint. But nonetheless, I get distracted. If you look at the next slide, you can see the five-mile river, and then the 50-foot buffer from the river goes right through the house. So we're trying to not do anything that'll affect that part of the house and encroach on that buffer line. We have not been to wetlands yet, but we have had informal conversation that obviously it's better to get out of the buffer and to not affect anything in that area. And on the next slide.
Mark, Luke Tash is speaking.
Sure.
While we're on that slide, can we go back to it?
Yeah.
If you look at the south side, I assume the south is the bottom?
Yeah.
On the south side of the existing residence, why can't you put the addition on that side of the residence?
That there?
Yeah, right there.
Well, there's, there is a setback concern back there. It's also the, that protrusion, kind of the bottom part of the L is single-story. It's kind of no way to get there without really, sure, redoing the whole house. Between the hallway and the second floor, if you look at the plans, there is no second floor there. So we would have to knock down and basically reconfigure the house to be able to get there at all.
But this, it's not an issue related to lots, is it? An issue because you can't get from the existing house into a two-story addition there, you're saying? Because, I mean, on your initial plan, it looked like if you built it right there, you'd stay outside of the wetlands and outside of all the setbacks.
It is, it is partly in terms of just getting there access-wise from the house, the existing house, to any addition in that direction. And then there is, of course, the ledge that starts to come up right behind there as well, which is, it's actually visible from the, if you look at it, you can see the ledge coming up. As you look from the back of the house, you can see the rock coming up, that grade. You can kind of make out the contour lines in the plot line, the plot there. I don't know if you have that, not, not on this image, but on the, there is a, there's a survey that has the contour lines as well that, oh, where'd it go?
No, oh, I'm gonna pull up the survey. Give me one second.
All right.
There you go. There's the survey.
Great, thank you. So you can, in this, in this view, you can see how the dash lines indicating the contours, they start to come up really steeply behind that corner there. Almost level with the house as you, as you begin to walk up the wall. You can see, you know, right where she passed her cursor, that already becomes the second floor level. So it actually comes up pretty quickly there on the bottom left.
How, from the property line to the existing residence, what, you know that amount? What's the, what's the distance?
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
I can, I have that. If you give me a moment, I can give that to you. Currently, 18, 18.2, call it, 18.25, a little bit better than 18 feet.
Six feet.
Yeah. I don't know if we can go back to the PowerPoint to continue to finish off that?
Wait one second.
Nope.
There you go.
Great, thank you. Just on the next slide, just, this is pretty straightforward, but the, the, there's a sewer easement that prevents us from going, going to the east as well, so that's, there's, there's really, that's pretty obvious. We can't, we can't go in that direction at all. It also affects us going north a bit, but not, not really too drastically. And then the last few pictures show how steeply that back comes up. It just comes up very quickly back there. You can actually see some of the, see some of the ledge already protruding kind of above that trashcan there. And then the last, the last page is just a summary of the existing zoning, and what we are requesting for the change, which is from the 18.2 down to the 12 feet. I thought it was the front yard, but I guess we're asking for the side yard. Can I, I'm not sure who explained the difference to me about the front and yard setbacks, but if that's the case, is the side yard also 25 feet at the, sort of at the back as well? So, because we have a drawing from the surveyor, which I think shows different information then. And I just want to understand what that would, what the correct information would be. I guess along the south line, was that supposed to be 25 feet as well, setback?
Are you along here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I blocked that, blocked it. Can you show me again?
Is it?
Yes. Yes.
So that is your rear yard setback? And in the one acre zone, your rear yard is 35 feet?
All right, so then that, that now, so on this image, what I have here is, was the information, this is back to your question, Luke. This information was given to us by the surveyor, but I guess that's incorrect. So that, that is shown at eight feet, so instead it's supposed to be 35 feet. So it's going to be much closer to the house than what is there additionally constraining going in that direction. So I think that's, but I think that's a summary of the points I wanted to make, and I hope that kind of explains what we're looking for. I believe you have the floor plans as well. I don't know if that's part of the conversation, but they're also in the package that we provided.
I can pull them up if you want them.
Sure, yeah.
Can you see them?
Yes. Yep, so the, we have some sketches of the, of the proposed addition, which might be helpful to visualize it. But I also wanted to point out the, the reason we were kind of, the reason we ended up with this direction of a request, we were getting rid of an existing garage, and putting, putting in its place now a new garage, but pushing it forward, and then allowing for access to the house between that garage and the house. So, I think about a six foot wide breezeway in between the two, not a breezeway in the literal sense, but a breezeway, a mudroom kind of passage area there. So if we could maybe look at the plans on sheet A01?
Yep.
Yeah, so A01, this just shows the, kind of the profile of the outline of the garage that we'd like to demolish. And then if we could look at A1.1? Yeah, so now this shows what I meant by trying to squeeze the garage in between with a narrow mudroom between the garage and the house of about six feet.
This is John Mahoney speaking. On the, is this current section of the house one story or two stories?
The garage itself is one story.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the area behind, so that's the whole thing in the red hash mark in, or dotted line that we're looking at right now is all one story?
The, yeah, well, I think it's orange on my screen, but it's, yeah, but that's, that's one story, correct.
Okay. And is the second floor essentially at that? Because it looks like, at least front and rear, the second floor steps back on each side. If I look at the renderings, they don't go all the way to the footprint of the garage and the playroom, or whatever it is here.
The second floor overhangs the first floor at the front and is in line at the back. Wait, am I, I don't know if I'm, I think that's, you mean the existing second floor?
No, 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 no. The to-be-built second floor looks, looked like in the renderings, that it steps back from the first.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. In the addition, yes, it steps back quite a bit.
Somewhat in line with the, well, maybe not quite all the way to the orange line, but.
No, the second floor at the front, I wanted to line up with the existing house, was the plan, so it looked as if it was lined up with that.
Gotcha.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is there anyone here in the audience that is here to speak in favor of this variance?
Uh, yes. My name's Charles Newton, and I'm the neighbor immediately to the north of the Gurney's property. And reviewed the plans, and I think they look great. And would encourage the board to approve them based on the request. I think they they will help the overall value of properties in the neighborhood. And I think that's, this is a nice improvement to the structure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this variance?
Hold on a second. Lori, are you here for this application?
No, that's me. It's Pete. I'm just watching. That's my wife. I don't have a camera.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see, sorry.
Sorry Lynn, that's okay.
That's, that, that looks like everyone else. The grace appeal.
Okay. Okay, any, any last words from the homeowner, or from Mark?
I, no, I think, I think that encapsulated what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anything?
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, the board will go into its business session. Discussion or comments from the board on this variance? What do you think, Rich?
I think it's reasonable. Yeah, it almost relates to the, you know, the B zone argument that we were discussing before.
Laura, Rich is an alternate.
Right, that's true.
Sorry. Yes. Ben?
Wait, let me unmute you, Ben, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. This is Ben Bielis. I just wanted to tell the homeowners that in my experience with looking at these surveys, they have won the record of a survey with the most lines intersecting closely and impenetrably. We have every possible objection to you're building anything with easements and rivers and setbacks and lines. I just think it's extraordinary that you've been able to put anything anywhere. So I, I say go with God.
Jessica?
I would agree. I mean, there's certainly quite a bit of hardship running with this property. And it seems like they've tried to do the best that they can to minimize the need for variance to try to make this space, you know, work for the family at this time. And, you know, the fact that they're within the coverage too.
Yeah, I agree. I think they've worked hard on this, and I think, I think it would definitely be a great addition to the, to the home, and they certainly have some obstacles that they've been able to do. Really come up with something that would really work for the house and accommodate them as well, so. Is there anyone who would like to put a motion in for the variance?
Yeah, I would move the approval of the variance request in accordance with the plans and specs submitted.
Anyone to second that?
We have to note the hardship, right, Ben?
Right, topographical, the river, the sewage pipeline easement, the topographical lay of the land behind the house. I think that's probably enough.
Would anyone second that?
Cardin will second.
Okay, Jessica, will you start the voting?
Cardin in favor.
Luke?
Tashen in favor.
Ben?
Bielis in favor.
John?
Mahoney in favor.
Edmund's in favor. Your variance is granted. Thank you.
Thank you to the board and the staff.
Yes, thank you, Mark. You did a great job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Our next up is our order of appeal, but I would request that we take a five-minute break, if that is possible. Lynn, is that possible, to take a few minute break?
You can take a few minute break. I'm gonna leave everything recording on, so everyone should just come back.
Okay, it is, it's 8:52. We'll come back at 8:57 if possible.
Hey Pete, how are you?
Good Lynn, how you doing?
I'm good. Beautiful day, right?
Pardon?
It was a beautiful day today.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have a lot of stuff? That, did anything come in on this?
No, the applicant, the appellant, and Grace chose not to submit anything to add to the record. So, we'll see.
Yeah, good. Could be fairly quick then. Should be, whether it is.
Oh, it looks like my entire board took a break.
No one's there?
No one's there. It's you, me, and the rest of the lawyers around here. You've got Amy and Ted and Diana. I'm gonna unmute you all. Join in the chit chat if you want. Hey, oh, I'm sorry Ted, I thought I unmuted you. Are you unmuted?
Unmuted.
Oh, sorry. I tried it again. I'm sorry, I accidentally touched you again. I thought you weren't. There you go.
There we go.
You can keep muted.
Hi Amy.
You'd probably say the same about me.
Yeah. Never, never Amy, not once. Pete, how you doing?
Good Ted, how are you?
I'm doing bad. I feel like I'm locked onto the screen. I had a deposition all day. Now I've got a hearing tonight. I'm zoomed, I'm zoomed out.
Hey John, I think we are in a race for getting a haircut. I'm scheduled tomorrow for 7 o'clock, but I may have to cancel because apparently they're taking lacrosse pitches with parents and students tomorrow, so. But then Margaret says, well, I don't want you in the pitcher if you're not gonna get the haircut.
My, my daughter keeps threatening to try a man bun on me.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be a good look for me.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to, it's an order of appeal. David Marcus and Jennifer Holm, owner of 1328 Smith Ridge Road, appeal the issuance of a zoning permit issued to Grace Farms Foundation Incorporated on February 15th, 2019, for the renovation of existing storage space into office, garage, and storage space in the West Farm located on the Grace Farms property at 365 Luke's Wood Road, map 41, block 38, lot 77. You had, we had left this matter open, and I guess we thought that we'd give everyone a chance to say what they needed to say, and so is there, did, who, is there one that wants to start, or did you have anything that you wanted to add?
This is Amy Sujins, for the record. Thanks, everyone, and I'd like to
Thanks, everyone, and I'd like to commend you. I've never had a commission actually take a five-minute break and it only be five minutes. That was pretty impressive. So we left the hearing, as you noted, Chairman Edmunds, last month to address any questions that the board members may have. Neither Attorney O'Hanlon nor I have submitted any additional information, frankly, in accordance with your request. So if there are any questions that you may have, I think either of us are happy to answer them. And then if there are any questions or when questions and Attorney O'Hanlon's comments, if he has any are concluded, I have a very short, you know, 60-second conclusion, so.
Okay. Attorney O'Hanlon, did you want to add something?
Good evening. Thank you for hearing this. No, you have the various funders' position in that paper, and I felt like you all had some very good questions and were able to let us explain our position last time. So we don't have any further to offer. We just ask that you deny the appeal.
Okay, does the board have anything that they wanted to ask or comment?
Luke Tash speaking. I had a couple of questions for them. Basically the same questions for each of them. I guess I'll ask Ed the questions first. At the last presentation, we discussed whether this was a material or a non-material change. Where's, what can, I'm having trouble finding a special permit on the website today. Where in the special permit is the term "material" used?
I believe there's a provision, I don't have the special permit in front of me, I believe there's a provision that says that there will be no material expansion or intensification of the uses. But, you know, material is a, I don't know what else to tell you. Our position is that this is not anything material. It's a minor modification to the interior of a building.
How does material differ from, because that's my second question I had, was how is material different from intensification? Does a material deviation differ from an intensification? Wouldn't an intensification be a material deviation?
I really don't understand your question.
So you said there's to be no material deviations or intensifications, and I would think an intensification would include a material deviation.
The word deviation, to my knowledge, is not used.
Oh.
No. Luke, the actual language from condition, general condition six.
Six, okay.
Is there shall be no material, I'm sorry, this is John Mahoney, there shall be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use unless specifically authorized herein. There, where Lynn just drew it.
Wait a minute, I was on the town website trying to find that. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney.
Approved use or intensification of any use.
Luke, it's under the 46th application where it was originally submitted. It's on the website, but go up to the April 6th application materials for 365 Luke's Wood Road.
Or under the 46th? Under applicant's presentation?
No, it's just under the material that they submitted, their applicant, it's their application. It's like a 45 or 49-page document.
It's Exhibit A in there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Tash, and our position is that, as you can read there, the material change of use or intensification of use implicit in any of the uses that Grace Farms enjoys, whether it's the charitable organization or whether it's a religious institution, is the right to conduct administrative work. And so our view is that these, the configuration of some office space is not, one, it's not material, and it's not a change of use at all. Every organization has a right to administer itself, and that's all this is.
So the number six, the way you're reading it, is there should be no material, so then obviously not changing the approved use here. Or intensification of any use, so that'd be including, I guess, an approved use. I guess that reading of that sentence makes sense there. So then the question becomes, is it an intensification of the approved use? And then that brings us to the special permit language for uses, right? And that's, you discussed at the last hearing, Amy and you discussed that at the last hearing.
Right. So like I said, every organization has a right to administer to itself, and that's all this is.
The second comment I have is, I don't know if we should consider extraneous evidence. I don't know how appropriate it is. And I don't think it's helpful to have in the record these materials on donating respirators or not donating respir, I mean, masks. I mean, it's, I'm sure it's a positive thing they do, but any decision that I make for or against this, I'm not going to consider, you know.
Well, if we've submitted to the record. Record, extraneous evidence is evidence, it's not part of the record. If it's part of the record, you have the right to consider it or not to consider it. There's no.
I don't think, I don't think we have to consider information that's irrelevant. I don't think that's appropriate for us to consider relevant information. We're looking at this special permit here. So that's my comment there is, I don't think that was helpful.
Mr. Tash, and I beg to differ because I think that an organization that's trying to serve the community as hard as Grace Farms is, has a right to let you know what it's doing. That's part of its use. It's a charitable organization. It is intended, it exists for one sole purpose, not for profit, but to help the community. And we have a right to submit that. If you believe that you don't have a right to consider it, that's your right, but don't expect me to agree with that.
John, did you have something? John?
Yes, I do. I'd like to ask a question for Attorney O'Hanlon and Attorney Sujins. Where, I have in front of me the same document, the special permit. Where in this document does it say that there is a limitation on the reorganization of space within the four walls of the buildings? Where does that become a problem? I mean, certainly there are places where it says limits the amount of selling space you can have, a store or whatnot, but I'm not sure I could find anywhere where it said you couldn't move office walls around or have offices or even add or subtract people.
Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, thanks. Amy Sujins, it's inherent in the use of the word intensification, which has a legal sort of meaning, particularly in the non-conforming context. We went into a little bit more detail, I think, at one of the earlier discussions, but basically, in the situation of a non-conforming use, the concept of intensification is used somewhat routinely, where you can intensify a non-conforming use, meaning you can do more of the same, but you can't expand it. So in this situation, the Planning and Zoning Commission, in issuing and adopting Condition Six, the issue of intensity and how intense the site was used was of great concern to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the neighbors. And so the choice of the word intensification has to be given effect, and that's exactly what we believe, that the idea that all of these limitations inherent in the special permit, in what was shown in the plans that were the basis of the special permit, all relate to how the property was being used. You make changes to that to allow additional employees, to create additional offices, that is going to intensify the use. They can do more work there, they can have more employees, and ultimately, that's what it goes back to. If you remember, our ask here is to void the zoning permit and the building permit and CO to bring this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So ultimately, our ask is that the Planning and Zoning Commission be given the opportunity to interpret whether I'm right with respect to use of the term intensification, or whether Attorney O'Hanlon's interpretation about it being a material change, or as I believe he's arguing, a material intensification, should be brought back to them. So I think ultimately, it's Condition Six, but the ask is ultimately, this is a decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I guess Attorney O'Hanlon, if I could just jump in before, I'd also like to hear your reply, but I want to just push back on that a little bit. Throughout this document, the Planning Commission limited cars, they limited size of activity, frequency of activity, they limited, and they specifically referred to automobile use as one of the things that was a significant control factor, my words, not the actual words in the document. They limited outdoor activities, they, to the point where they said you can't rent snowshoes. So I'm having a hard time with as much control as they put around the activities going on, the hours of the activities, the lighting of the activities, for them to magically say, well, you can't add people in the normal course of business, other than that they limited that effectively through the controls on the parking. And specifically, you know, at 226 spaces, for any reason onsite, you've got to shut the parking down. So I'm, and it was, I think, 220 for normal operating, I think, in there. So that, plus in, to your last point, in conditions 95 through sort of 100, it looked to me like PMZ had the ability to claw back the special permit, or at least force a sit-down, should they view that there was a problem and that the, and that Grace Farms and its uses were operating outside of bounds. And in fact, they did that, and that's how we got to this 2017 amendment. So I'm still having a hard time that adding one and a half people or rearranging offices without an alteration to the exterior footprint of the building is an intensification, and one that was deemed by Paragraph Six to be, yeah, to be an intensification, and that was their intent, or Condition Six, general Condition Six, that that was their intent, was you cannot add any people. You cannot, you know, and at the time, Grace Farms, I don't know, was fully operational and up to speed.
And that's exactly what I would say to you, is that.
I think the question's addressed to me. Is that right, Mr. Mahoney?
No, I first, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Hanlon, I'd first like to hear Ms. Sujins' reply to that, and then I would like to hear your thoughts as well.
So I think the fact that the commission knew that there might be things in the future that might happen on the site, but they didn't know what they were, were in fact, you know, was in fact part of the impetus behind Condition Six. That if Grace, at that point, was certainly fully open to the public, was operational at that point, by the time this was issued, Grace Farms had been operating for almost two years. It had opened in October of 2015. And certainly, part of the, what the commission heard through that process were the activities that were taking place. And having sat through that hearing and listened to them, I think Condition Six was exactly for this purpose. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but we are telling you there shall be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use unless authorized herein. They were, they were basically saying, if you are going to change, you're going to make material change or intensify, you need to come back to us. And certainly, I think if we are successful and you uphold our appeal, we go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if they were to agree with us, then I think you're right, that the language of Condition 96, Condition 97 would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to say, Grace Farms Foundation, you have violated the terms of the special permit by operate, by converting this space, intensifying this space, and we are going to revoke the special permit, or we're going to impose some amendment, some sort of requirement. I think 96, which obviously gives a third-party right to review, but certainly 97 works in tandem with what they envisioned, and the sort of forward-looking nature of what's mentioned in Condition Six.
Thank you. Attorney O'Hanlon?
Thank you. In reverse order. Everything you've just heard from Attorney Sujins is one attorney's view of the matter. You, I think you were reading the permit exactly right, Mr. Mahoney. There is no prohibition against them adding people. There is no prohibition against them configuring their space for their administration however they want. I still can't, and I don't know if you're hearing the same thing I'm hearing, but there is a fundamental discrepancy, I mean, inconsistency in what their position is. When Ms. Sujins says that you can do more of it, but you can't expand it, I'll agree with that. You can do more of it, you can have more people, you can have more offices. You can't expand the footprint of those buildings, and that's not what they did. So you've hit your, you've put your finger on a fundamental reason why it's not material. The second thing you're exactly right about is there is no prohibition against the number of people that are there, in terms of employees. That is something that, if you look at what Planning and Zoning does, they don't tell people how they can operate their business. They tell people what they expect of the uses, but they don't tell people how they operate their business, and that's what this is about. Thirdly, Grace Farms, let me clarify one thing about why we were, why we needed a special permit in 2017. Grace Farms was open for less than a year, not two years, less than one year. And it became, they came to say, if you look in the record, the first permit that they had dealt almost exclusively with construction. Planning and zoning, after hearing all of it, all of the aspects of what Grace Farms was going to be physically, addressed only the construction and did not address Grace Farms' operations in that first special permit. And they did not, there were violations, there were concerns that were raised, and there was nothing in the permit that addressed the activities. So Grace Farms was invited to, but it also volunteered to come back and seek a special permit that added the function on its activities and uses, not on its construction. So that's where that came from. But again, fundamentally, the idea that this is material is preposterous. They have, you can add three offices, it's a net one and a half employees. That is not material, and that is not a change of use. And then lastly, Mr. Mahoney, this is, the idea somehow that this permit was granted outside of the purview of Planning and Zoning is itself not accurate. And I think Mr. Rum, Pete can tell you about this. When a building permit is filed, it goes to the staff, it goes to Lynn to be reviewed. She is not operating in a vacuum. She is the staff of Planning and Zoning. She knows what the special permit says. She looks at the special permit. You heard in the last appeal that Keisha Palmer, I mean, Keisha Paul, the chairman of, emailed the chairman of Planning and Zoning to be sure of what her position was. All of this informs what Lynn did. So the idea that this is being done outside of Planning and Zoning, that staff exists as the eyes and ears of Planning and Zoning until such time as that staff believes that it should kick it upstairs to Planning and Zoning. And she didn't believe it, she needed to. And so the question is, is in her position, did she exercise that correctly? But this is not something that went around Planning and Zoning and was never seen or heard. This is exactly the sort of thing that's entrusted to staff on a day-to-day basis in that town hall. And the only thing unique about this, you've got a neighbor who with an implacable hatred of Grace Farms, that's willing to bring this sort of thing to you. This sort of thing happens all the time with special permits, whether it's the YMCA, whether it's any church in town, whether it's. it's any church in town, whether it's, whether it's the Glass House, or whether it's Grace Farms. There's a question that always comes up, is it okay under the special permit? There's communications with staff, there are decisions made. This is nothing that's extraordinary, or nothing that is out of the, out of anything but the normal course of operations. And that's before you even, that's the process, when you get to what actually happened, three office spaces in a former storage space, it's like telling you, you can't fit out your attic, because you've got somebody, you know, you've got a cousin that's going to be schooling the area and wants to live with you. It's still a residential use. This is the administration, the office administration of a charitable institution. So that's why, everything you've heard from Amy, and with all respect to Amy, is a lawyer's interpretation in behalf of her client. Everything you're hearing from me is from the plain language of that special permit, as it was interpreted by the staff of Planning and Zoning and their counsel. It's a fundamental difference.
Thank you.
Can I make one clarification as to what my argument was?
Yes, yes, please do.
So I think the one thing I wanted to be clear on was that I was suggesting that more of the use could be allowed, and in fact, that would be true in the non-conforming use situation. The condition here says, there shall be no, so it's, so there's no intensification of any use unless specifically authorized. It's not a question that there can be some intensification. This, our position, and frankly, I don't think it's just a lawyer's interpretation, I think I'm making the same plain language argument, that Condition Six says, there shall be no intensification of any use, that's what it says, and our position is that this is an intensification of the use of the West Barn Building that was not previously approved.
So, but let me probe that a little further, the word intensification and your position on that. If you take, for example, the bookstore, and the bookstore currently handles 500 SKUs of books, and they take it to 1,000 SKUs of books, you would be claiming that as an intensification, and therefore, not allowed.
If, that, if the bookstore had a special permit condition like this, this is not a standard Town of New Canaan-
The bookstore, the bookstore is subject to the same Condition Six, it's specifically called out as permitted use, its square footage is limited, and so now, you know, they're not expanding the bookstore, but they're carrying additional SKUs, which, if I understand your definition of an intensification, doubling the number of SKUs of books would trigger an intensification.
Except that here, we do actually have an expansion. Grace Farms converted unfinished space to accommodate additional offices. So it's not a physical expansion of the building, but there was a renovation of the building to allow additional office space. If the bookstore had space, and it was 1,000 square foot-
That's an expansion, but I'm-
It's not a physical expansion.
But, but you've also used the word intensification.
Correct.
It would not be expanding the number of SKUs, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point for everybody.
Understood.
I'm trying to be sure I understand your position on intensification. The bookstore is not at issue here, but I'm trying to probe intensification.
Correct.
If they doubled the number of SKUs, does that not, by your definition, represent an intensification, and therefore, they should be going back to Planning and Zoning for that intensification?
Not if they are operating out of the same space, and not creating any kind of additional area, that's been depicted on a plan as, here is the space in which we are operating, and we are now doing more work in more space.
So, if you're saying intensification, then, equals a physical expansion of space?
But it wasn't just physical, I'm sorry, I just thought Laura Edmonds, it, what's not just physical, they're saying that they also increased people, so-
Correct.
The Webster definition of intensify is to grow, I just looked it up.
I know, well, I think to grow could be the number of books, it could be people, it could be the, they don't limit the number of books, nor do they-
They didn't put books in, John, they put people in.
I understand.
And, and, and they, I mean, I don't know if we could bring it up, only because Attorney O'Hanlon did, but when Keisha, when we did this with Keisha, what was the number of people that were added at that point as well? Do we know?
It was more, there were more people added at that time. There are no limitation on the employees, there was none whatsoever.
We're intensifying, according to the definition, it would be to grow, so-
Respectfully, Madam Chairman, you're hearing a lot of legal description of these terms that the law has never quite clarified, and Pete Gellerman will take-
Well, then, that's our job, isn't it, to interpret it as?
No, I think your job is to decide whether Lynn abused her discretion when she decided to grant that permit. You're being taken so far afield in terms of where this special permit is, that I'm just, I'm sorry it's happening, it's embarrassing, because it's not fair to you. But those, those, that, what you've heard that the Planning and Zoning said, or meant, is speculation. That permit says what it says, almost any special permit use is told that in their special permit. I don't even agree with Ms. Sutchen's claim that this is extraordinary. Every special permit is subject to being taken back if you abuse it, that's the whole purpose of the special permit, is to keep control over an organization for not, in order to protect the neighborhood around it. But again, the idea that adding one and a half employees, we weren't converting unused space, we were converting storage space. Now, you could argue, you know, we're de-intensified a use because we're not storing as much, I mean, the whole thing could be completely preposterous, because we're using very precise words, and counsel is trying to suggest to you that they have a very special meaning, and they don't, until they've been, until Planning and Zoning chooses to define them. But again, the fundamental issue for you all, was that, was Planning and Zoning staff, when they looked at that against the special permit, the decision to sign off on that, was that an abuse of her discretion? And I just, I admire what you're trying to do, but you're, you know, taking on, these are hearings that have gone on over six months, and you can't, you don't have all of the records in front of you, and you don't have Planning and Zoning to tell you what they meant, but I think from a plain meaning standpoint, you've got an organization on an 89-acre parcel that's already got 20, you know, 26, 20, or 30, whatever the number of his employees, below 50 employees, adding one employee, configuring three offices, is not material change of anything.
Okay. Luke, Luke has, Luke, you have something to add?
Yes, Luke Dash is speaking. Can I ask Pete Gellerman a question?
Sure.
Okay. The first question I have, because Attorney O'Hanlon keeps bringing up, are we determining whether or not Lynn abused her discretion, or are we just looking at this de novo, as if we were in her shoes, how we decide? Because I feel like determining if she abused her discretion's a lot higher standard than, you know, if we're just looking at this de novo. So what's our, what's our review standard?
The standard is whether it was proper to issue a zoning permit, whether the zoning permit should have been issued. So you can, you can, if it should not have been issued, you could call that an abuse of discretion, if you want, but really, it's just whether or not, under the circumstances that you have in front of you, you've heard, whether or not a zoning permit should have been issued, for the work that was authorized.
That's, that's what I thought.
And I would, for the record, I would disagree, Amy Sutchen, I would disagree, you are sitting in a de novo capacity, you are standing in her shoes, it's not a question of whether she abused her discretion, that has a legal implication, you are sitting as Lynn, as if you are being-
Isn't that what I, isn't that what I just said, Amy? Isn't that what I just said?
No, you said, you said-
I said, did she properly issue the zoning permit?
Right, and you said-
That means, that's the Zoning Board of Appeals to determine whether it should have been issued.
But you also said you could phrase that as an abuse of discretion, I think that we're distinguishing.
Amy, the way I interpreted what Attorney Gellerman was saying was, is the way you said, I think the two of you are saying the same thing, just perhaps with slightly different words. The second question-
I would add to that, if I could speak for one second, when you sit in the shoes, when you look at your staff person, and you decide whether she did the right thing, why wouldn't you begin by acknowledging that she is the staff person who is trained, she's a, she is a town planner by training, she is hired to be the Planning and Zoning's eyes and ears on these matters, and she is entitled to apply her judgment, as she believes Planning and Zoning intended in that special permit? Why wouldn't you begin with that, crediting her that role, before you start acting like you are a super Planning and Zoning Commission, who's going to revisit every issue that Jennifer Holman, David Marquados did not win, when they opposed the special permit in the first place? Why would you allow yourself to be suckered into that type of analysis?
Attorney O'Hanlon, I don't feel like saying I'm being suckered into anything is necessarily an insult to me right now, but-
I do, I think you're wrong.
I think it's a de novo review, whether or not, we're just looking at it, we're not deciding if she decided one way or the other.
I don't think you understand what that word means, respectfully. It means exactly what Pete just told you. But it does not mean, it does not mean you start over from the beginning, you don't credit Lynn with any understanding or knowledge, or any experience, you let her do her job.
Attorney O'Hanlon, I have to jump in here, because I think you're now starting to throw stones at people who are trying to do their job-
I'm sorry.
And to understand things, and to say that we don't, or to imply that we are not respectful of Lynn in her position, is flat-out wrong.
I'm not suggesting that at all.
Offense to it, no, it's what you said, that we are getting suckered into ignoring Lynn, it is not helpful to you, your argument, or to your client, to go that far. I understand you're frustrated, but we're also trying to do our own due diligence and do the right thing here for all parties.
You know, I apologize if that's the way you took it, but that's not the way I intended it, but I do think-
It sure came off that way, and you've been repeatedly about this through, you know, over the line, as far as I am concerned, in many of these meetings, and you just crossed it big time with me.
Okay, Jessica? Jessica?
Jessica Carden, for the record. Frankly, Attorney O'Hanlon, just feel, you might want to do some research into the professional backgrounds of some of the board members. Several of us are actually licensed attorneys, so we clearly know what de novo means. That said, I just want to get back to the basics. There are three terms that keep getting thrown around, I would like to hear final positions from Attorney Sutchen and Attorney O'Hanlon for their clients, as to what their interpretations of these three terms are, with respect to this particular issuance by Lynn and the zoning against the special permit, and the three terms are non-conforming use, intensification, and materiality. And as a special bonus question, if you can point to any case law in Connecticut that interprets intensification against a special permit, you win.
Could I follow up my second question to Pete Gellerman before, that I had before? And that's kind of related, that one is, in the non-conforming use context, intensification require a physical expansion, or say, someone's an auto body shop, and they, I don't know, they stay within the same exact shop, but they convert, you know, one, once, you know, the bathroom into a second office, so they have more cars coming in, is that an intensification? Because more cars are coming in, or since they stayed within the same, exact same structure, they made absolutely no changes at all to the building? Is, it doesn't seem like, at least, I'm leaning towards the idea that it's not really an intensification, but I guess that's related to Jessica's question, too.
Here's part of the difficulty there. Intensification in the zoning context is usually used as a term to indicate that some sort of additional work is not an expansion of a non-conforming use or building, for example. So, leave it at uses. So a, if a use is intensified in the zoning context, it doesn't mean it's an expansion, it means it's permitted. You can intensify your use in a non-conforming situation, and it, and it doesn't result in a violation or the need for a variance, you have a right to do that. That's the context in which the word intensification is usually used. I'm not sure it's being used in that context here. So, it, which is part of the problem, because it's a, it's a term that, I don't know if the Planning and Zoning Commission meant it in the context of a use that's legal, as opposed to expansion, expanding into conformity, it doesn't, that doesn't even apply in a special permit use, because by definition, a special permit use is conforming, it conforms, it's not a non-conforming. So intensification of a conforming use is usually not something that ever, is not something that comes up typically, because a use that's permitted can generally get busier. I mean, you can, you can add to your business if it's, if it's a special permit use, typically. So it's, it's being used, and I don't think I'm necessarily making this a whole lot clearer, but it really depends on your interpretation of what that term means in this context. I would say this, intensification of a use generally would imply either, and I'm trying to think of, in a special permit context, what an intensification of use would be, because if you're permitted to conduct a certain activity, you have a special permit to say, be a church, just to take something, you know, you have a special permit as a church. I don't think having more parishioners is an intensification of that permitted use, or if the school is attached to that. Having more students is not an intensification of that use, the use remains the same, in a special permit context. So, again, that's kind of something that the board is tasked with interpreting here, and that is whether or not additional office space, one and a half additional employees, I guess, is an intensification of the permitted use, which, which use, by the way, includes office use. I think the permitted use, the special permit for Grace Farms includes administrative use and office use and other things, so that's really what the board is tasked with determining.
Okay, who would like to, I know Jessica had those couple of questions, Attorney Sutchen, would you like to answer your questions, or put your last remarks in?
Yeah, I think to address Jessica Carden's questions, and given what Pete just said, I agree with him. He had a very good summary, an accurate summary of what intensification is, to the extent that it comes up, most typically, in the non-conforming context, that's the vast majority of the case law, and as I was sitting here and listening to Pete, agree with him that I'm hard-pressed to think of a special permit use that would typically deal with intensification. And frankly, that is why Condition Six is as unusual as it is, where it specifically prohibits intensification, because in a situation, as you described, if you have a university and you have more students, if you have a church and you have more parishioners, you sort of inherently would, or could, have an intensification. What the Planning and Zoning Commission did here was specifically say, there shall be no intensification. So they were, they were adopting Condition Six, overriding what at least two of us on this call believed to be what the understanding of the general use of the word intensification. And I'd remind you that there's also a letter submitted to you by Attorney David Sherwood, who is the attorney who was involved in the planning and zoning proceedings, and represented additional adjacent neighbors, Tim Kerr and Donna Bissonette, who are one property removed, but also directly adjacent to Grace Farms, and his belief is that this modification of this space and conversion into additional offices also constitutes a violation- and conversion into additional offices also constitutes a violation of Condition 6. So I think ultimately there's that with respect to the question about materiality. I think if we were talking about sort of the first part of Condition 6 with respect to a material change of the approved use, if this was a change from, you know, they're approved as a philanthropic organization or a club and organization as well as the religious institution. I think materiality would come in if there was an argument that there's no longer a religious institution or whether something's a religious institution. I think that's where materiality comes in. I think the rest of it falls within those categories as Pete described of nonconformity and intensification.
Okay, Mr. O'Hanlon?
Thank you. In terms of these questions, I, I don't think nonconforming use respectfully has anything to do with this because it's a special permit. In terms of the definitions of intensification and expansion, respectfully, there's not enough information before you in that language, that special permit, to, to really parse out what planning and zoning meant. Except I would say that there is no question, as Ms. Sutgens said a little while ago, that if you do more of it, but not expand it, you're doing, you're okay. And again, I just, I think this is a, you know, we're talking about some terms that are imprecisely defined and it's, it wouldn't be appropriate to hang a decision on that. With respect to materiality, I think you have every right to look at this for what it is. This is a day内的change within the confines of a building. It's not anything except, you know, literally moving furniture around. And therefore, it does not justify the type of relief that's being sought here. And so I don't have any case, case law on this because this is, at this stage in the process and the, and the decision that's being made, I'm not sure a court has ruled on. And I'm not, so I don't think it would, it would explain it any better to you. So I would just conclude by saying, first of all, I haven't meant to offend anybody here and I apologize. I speak passionately for my client because I do believe in them. I am frustrated a little bit because what you're being asked to do is, is not to decide whether one and a half new employees and a reconfiguration of offices, they're revisiting fundamental issues that were decided by planning and zoning when they granted this special permit. And that's why I feel as strongly as I do. I think that there is a day内mism aspect to this. The law does not care about trifles. It doesn't matter where your furniture or your employees are. And I think as Mr. Mahoney asked initially, there is nothing in that special permit that either limits the number of employees where they can work. And I think on that basis, you have, again, recognizing that, you know, resolution at the lowest level is always the best. You've got a sufficient basis to say, this is just not a consequential change in circumstances up there at all. They have every right to administer themselves and that's what they did. We ask you to deny it. Again, I, you know, having heard from three of you that I've spoken to harshly, again, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to hear from some of the board members of what their thoughts are.
Is there, are we going to a business session now?
No, we're not in business session, so I'd like to, right? I don't, we didn't call it a business session. So everyone, I'd like to hear discussion from, you know, even alternates if they'd like to join in. Ben?
Oh, you muted yourself, hold on one second.
Okay, I think whether I come at this either as looking at it as an abusive discretion by the staff or ab initio, whether I would have done the same thing, I come to the same conclusion. I don't think this is an intensification of use significant enough to warrant a finding of the violation of the permit. Eventually, you have to make the decision and that's where I am. So that's my two cents.
Rich?
Yeah, I, you know, again, I haven't been involved from the beginning with this, but I tend to agree. I mean, it all, the change is going to the confines of the building. But yeah, again, not being involved from the beginning. But to me, listening over the last two or three meetings, I don't see a materially enough change into what was going on to warrant.
I would, I would agree with what Ben and Richards have to say, excuse me. You know, I think it's sometimes like in real estate, we tell people to move into a house before you start changing things around or making renovations, alterations, and see how you live in the house. And in this instance, that could be, you know, what they did. They just felt that the space was better suited by converting the storage space. I don't really view it as intensification. I think if they had added to the footprint of the building and they had added, you know, 10 or 20 more employees, that would be a different story.
Jessica?
Carden, speaking for the record. I think it's significant that the special permit doesn't limit the number of employees. And I also view it as the way the special permit is drafted as looking at the property as a whole and whether there's an intensification of the entire use of the property. Because I haven't seen any limitations as well written into it that's specific to individual buildings or other purposes. Other than, you know, there's been a couple that said administrative or other things. But overall, a one and a half employee add-on seems to me within the confines of the special permit as not being an intensification of use. And the conversion or reconfiguration of a space also seems to not be a configuration of use where, to Becky's point, there wasn't additional construction or any other buildings constructed on the property.
Jessica, I tend to agree with you, but I don't see, you know, in the last meeting, I was asking how many employees is intensification of use. I don't think that that is, I don't think that employee count is relevant to the discussion unless, for example, the office space became totally out of whack with the administrative need of the improved uses. So for example, if they, if all they were was an office user, then that to me would be relevant. But I think that, looking back at the special use permit, there was excruciating detail about controlling the number of the impacts of this property on the surrounding neighbors. Whether it was number of cars, hours of operation, days of operation, reporting, inside activities, including down there limiting certain uses to very small amounts, outside activities, who can they give space to? Lighting, landscaping, all of that designed either to mitigate or to correct prior oversights to the impact on the neighbors. And finally, you know, as I went back and read some paragraphs that I hadn't really focused on, in my mind, P&amp;Z, whether directly or through staff, has the ability, just as Steve Kleppin did, to say, we're concerned about what's going on up there and to force a sit-down if they thought that a line had been crossed. And to me, I don't think that that is our job to cross the line. I mean, I'm where Ben is at the end of the day. My feeling is that Lynn, as staff for both us and P&amp;Z, is in a great position to, just as Steve did previously, to express concerns. And I don't think that this is one that I in any way would second guess.
Lou, do you have a want to talk?
I guess it's really, I don't see why, I think if we're just going to talk about our views like this, maybe it would be better in a business session, but.
Well, I wanted to add the, I wanted to hear the opinions of the alternates as well.
So the, I would agree with Amy and Pete Galderman regarding it's being a de novo review. I don't think I'm necessarily incompetent. I do think that some of the context, some of the texts to me were totally inappropriate, but that doesn't affect my decision. I think that Pete Galderman and Amy are both correct in their application of using intensification of use from the special permit context. That's the closest I can think of an intensification of use. I think the church example, I don't know who had it, but I think that's a really good example, which makes me think that it's logical that P&amp;Z, who is familiar with the term intensification of use, would have been using it in the special permit context whereby if you have a church and they, you know, reconfigure, reconfigure the, the space inside the building, you know, no one, I don't think that's an intensification of use. Some of the number of people attending the building, you know, isn't an intensification of use. Instead, I think P&amp;Z was using this in the special permit context because the, it is, it is not because of, I think that P&amp;Z was using this in a special permit context because they limited intensification of use as you would have limited it in a special permit context. Where with the church example, you'd say, you know, only so many parking spots, things like that. That's how you limit it because otherwise you need that physical change they've talked before. And John went through all those factors before that are in the, in the permits, that the P&amp;Z put into the permits that limit the use of the property. So I think it makes sense to me that you would apply this in the special permit context, the intensification of use definition. And as a result, using that definition, I don't think there's an intensification of use here. I think, you know, changing it from, changing it, you know, the number of employees here doesn't change it. So I mean, that kind of comes back to, I think, the definition that Pete, Pete had, Attorney Galderman had before that I was very useful from the special permit context. I'd apply that and say that, you know, because, because it's, there's no material change of use because it's a right use and there's no intensification of use because we're going to, because I would apply the special permit definition. And the P&amp;Z intended to apply a special permit definition because no one without limiting parking and all these other factors, the number of people and things like that could keep expanding. That's my analysis.
See, I don't, I don't know. I just think that we keep asking, we don't know what planning and zoning were thinking. So why don't we let them determine it? What is the problem of bringing it back to them and for that clarification? And, you know, I guess the thought of, okay, well, it's one person this year, so that's not intensification. And then it was three, three more people or such the year prior and that's not, you know, where does the line get drawn? You know, they, they were very specific about, planning and zoning was very specific about limiting what was happening there because they did not want the impact of the neighbors. And part of me is feeling as though Grace Church is just pushing this envelope and pushing the envelope and it's just getting a little further and further. And I just, I am always sympathetic to the neighbors. And I don't, I don't feel like I'm speaking out of school when I say that they are, have been impacted by that. And yes, Grace Church is doing wonderful things in the community and we all enjoy it. But you can't be a neighbor and not think that they are not impacted because they have been. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see the harm in saying, okay, planning and zoning, what did you mean? And it is nothing against Lynn or, you know, we work together as a community and it's okay to hear other people's voices. And, you know, they, they worked on it hard, long and hard and they had a special plan. And, you know, not to say that anyone's doing anything wrong, but why not hear from them? That's just my thought, but.
Just a point to that would be, this is Jessica Carden speaking. We're only tasked right now with this appeal to look at this particular issuance of a permit. And I understand where you're coming from with respect to the totality. But again, we have to trust the judgment call of planning and our staff to look at each individual request against a special partner and not look at, oh, there's been 15 requests or things like that. And what does this 15th one mean? So that's just a point to that. And the, the second point is really with respect to, again, personnel, I think we're all getting red herrened a little bit with it. But I just keep going back to the fact that the staffing numbers were not restricted in the special permit. So I would agree with you. If there's something else, like, you know, there was a permit for a new construction or expansion of the parking lot, those are things that we can concretely point to within the special permit where it would probably be an easier call to make a decision if this was intensification or not.
Well, Jessica, it actually says that they can't change the parking lot.
Right, no, I know that, I'm just saying.
Or park people in other areas to get around the parking limitations. It's very specific on that one item. It's glaringly silent on the issue of staffing. Laura, do we have any, before we go into business session or any other questions? Do we have people before or against?
Do we have?
I'm sorry. Do you want me to open up to the public?
Yes, sure.
Kate Blackdon, do you have anything to speak on this matter?
Nothing to add, just thanks for your time.
There's a couple more there, Lynn?
Yeah, there's two more. Jennifer Holman, do you have anything to add?
No, we have nothing to add, thank you. Thanks to commissioners for their time.
Diana Neves, do you have anything to add?
Nothing more, thank you.
Okay, the only other person sitting there is Cynthia Doll.
Okay. Okay, so.
When, when we go into business session, can we ask Pete Galderman questions or not?
Lynn, when we go into business section, can we ask Pete Galderman questions?
Yes, I believe so. Pete, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
No, yes, you can, for clarification purposes, yeah.
Okay, so the board want to go into business section? Are we ready to close this matter?
I'd move that we go into business session. I don't know if someone has to move for it or not.
Okay, let's go into the business session.
Just move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we're moving to close the, can I do that, Pete? Do I?
You should ask if somebody wants to, but you should make sure that Amy and Ted have nothing else to add. And Amy technically gets the last word because she's the applicant.
Okay. Attorney O'Hanlon, would you like to add anything else at this point?
Thank you all very much for hearing me out.
Okay, anyone else from the audience that's last?
No.
Anyone from the board? Okay, attorney sessions?
Sure. You know, having, having heard your discussion, I certainly understand that I may be trying to tilt at windmills. But I do think I would encourage you to look at the special permit as a whole and the intensity issues that you just discussed with respect to all of the limitations that were imposed upon Grace Farms for exactly the reasons you mentioned, that there were going to be impacts on the various surrounding neighbors. And the goal was to try and minimize those impacts. And I think Condition 6 was, was clear with respect to saying no intensification. And I would just like to take the opportunity to sort of rebut the repeated characterizations of me and my clients that Attorney O'Hanlon has claimed that all we're trying to do is revisit the opposition that we have.
revisit the opposition that we have raised over the last few years. But in fact, as I said earlier, our adjacent property owners, the Kirk Bissinett homeowners, were the ones who appealed. They reached a resolution with Grace Farms, settled their litigation, and are taking the same position that we are in this, deem this to be a violation of condition six. What my clients have done, what we have repeatedly asked for, including in this appeal and the prior one, is to actually have enforcement of the conditions and have the special permit be interpreted as it was written and have, as Attorney Sherwood also noted, you know, have Grace Farms honor that. We don't think that if they believe that this is some sort of technical violation, they certainly are not honoring the, certainly the spirit that they, that they alleged to give us during the planning and zoning process. So again, what we've asked for is, you know, for the zoning permit to be revoked, building permit, CO as well, until the Planning and Zoning Commission is given the opportunity to weigh in and interpret condition six with respect to whether this modification to the space was a violation there. And I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. We'll go into the business session.
Can I go back for a little history for a bit? As I recall, there were neighbors who objected to some of the things that Grace Farms was doing in the property back when Steve Kleppin was our zoning enforcement officer. And it was the fact that they brought those activities to Steve's attention that he brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission that precipitated a request to Grace Farms to submit an application for a revised permit. I don't see why the neighbors here, if they believe that converting a storage space into two new offices is somehow adversely impacting them, they can't bring that to the attention of the zoning enforcement officer and ask that that be considered by the P and Z Commission. When I look at the permit as a whole, and I know that what they were trying to do, this is a, a non-residential use in a residential area, and they were trying to protect the neighbors, and they gave the neighbors 100 conditions to try and protect them. And when I look at adding a couple of people and putting some desks inside what was a storage space, I don't see the adverse effect on the neighbors. And that's where I come down to say it's not an intensification of use that would violate the permit.
Laura, are you clear that you're, that you're in your business session now? Because I didn't hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor. Tash in favor.
All in favor? Okay, we are in business session.
Attorney Gelderman, could you remind us, when we've been in this position before, I think we have three different outcomes. We can vote to deny the petition, which is effectively upholding what Lynn decided. And then I forget exactly the other two. We could go the other way and, and grant the petition, which would kick it to P and Z. And then there was a middle ground one, I think.
No, not, no. Usually, sometimes you have the right to modify, but there's no modification here. It's either, you're either going to sustain the appeal or not. It takes four votes to sustain the appeal. So if, if, if the board is inclined to grant the Marquitos' appeal, then four of you will have to vote to do that. It's, so it's either, it's either an approval or a denial.
Okay.
One way, does it have to be revoked? Does the building permit have to be revoked? Or can it, would it just be able to be brought in front of planning and zoning, but they would be able to carry on business until planning and zoning comes to their?
If you sustain the appeal, then the zoning permit is revoked. I know that Amy has taken the position that if the zoning permit's revoked, then you're also revoking the building permit and the CO. But you need a zoning permit to get a building permit, and you need a zoning permit to get a CO. However, you don't have the authority to revoke anything but the zoning permit. If you do revoke the zoning permit, then because the work has already been done, then somehow, and I'm not even sure what the mechanism will be, this will have to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to take a, take a look at what they intended the resolution to be. But since it's, it's fairly, it's part of the problem here is, is that this zoning permit was issued over a year ago, so the work has been done. Typically, when you're reviewing a zoning permit, it's prior to any work being done. So you're effectively revoking a permit for work that's already been done. Until somebody tells them to stop using the space, they're not going to stop using it. But I don't think, but at any rate.
So if, just so I'm clear, so if we sustain the appeal, that means the permit is revoked.
Correct.
Is that correct?
The zoning permit's revoked if you sustain the appeal.
And so do we have to be clear that we're only responding to that portion of it?
That's all that's under appeal to you is, even though the, the appeal referenced the building permit and the CO, you don't have any authority over those.
Gotcha. But we don't have to specifically call that out? You're saying it doesn't matter because we don't have authority?
Right. You're really, you're really deciding whether the zoning permit was properly issued or not.
Thank you. Luke, you have questions?
I, no, I, I think Attorney Gelderman answered my questions. If you could run through the, the intensification use for the church again, I think that, that was helpful, that example of the, you know, if a church has a special permit and more people attend it.
Right. It's, it's, that's simply part of the special permit. In other words, you wouldn't use typically the term intensification when you're simply adding parishioners to a church. The, the problem, as I said before, is that, that we're using the term in a context that it's not usually, that doesn't usually apply to the word intensification. So intensification in the context of a special permit can mean, I suppose, any number of things. But for, the point I was trying to make is that if that term were used in the context of a church, I don't think anybody would, could reasonably claim that the, that if parishioners were added, it was an intensification of that use, just more parishioners. The use is the same, and it's, I don't think that's the intent of an intensification would be if there were more parishioners. But again, it's a term that's used in a totally different context typically in the zoning world. So it's, it's a little bit odd to have the word intensification in a special permit, to use that as a condition. Not to criticize the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's, it's just, it's, it's a little unclear as to what that is supposed to mean.
Well, that's why, what's the harm in asking them? Why?
I don't know that there's any harm, other than it creates another appeal process, potentially. Creates litigation, potentially.
In what way?
Well, if it goes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have to make a decision, it becomes something that can be appealed. So.
So Attorney Gelderman, if the, let's say this is de novo, and we're seeing Lynn's shoes.
Right.
Assuming I know what de novo means. Does that mean that in Lynn's shoes, Lynn would send, send it back to P and Z? Or how would that work if we had to make a decision here? Or would we deny it or logistic, or how would she do that?
Well, if, if you think that the permit should not have been issued, and instead it had been referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission, then I would think you would sustain the appeal. If you think that Lynn, at the, sitting in Lynn's shoes, did she have the ability to make a decision and determine that that was an appropriate zoning permit to issue, then you would deny the appeal. So it's, it's not necessarily what you individually would do, but, but you're, you're asking yourself, should the zoning permit have been issued? And if as the board, you think it should not have been issued because Lynn should have gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission, then you're going to sustain the appeal. But if you're taking a look at what the special permit says and what was being applied for, which was to put in some offices, and you say that's an appropriate decision for the, for Lynn to have made as the, as staff for the Planning and Zoning Commission, then you would, I assume you would deny the appeal.
So if, before, Luke Tashon speaking, so before I was looking at the factors that John Mahoney listed as examples of this not being an intensification, maybe that could also, I guess, be looked at the other way, where they wouldn't have to use the definition of intensification here, because if they had more than, you know, however many cars they permit, that would be, I guess, a violation of the terms of the permit itself. So maybe that would be redundant in that context. So, I don't know, maybe wavering more towards Laura's position. I'm not sure I see what you're saying there, and I guess it being gray the way the term is used here. So I guess I'll listen to what other people on the board have to say.
You know, it's, it's one of the problems of language. Words aren't black and white. Intensification, materiality, reasonableness, these are things that we, there isn't, you can't add it up, it's not an algorithm. It's that you take what you've heard, and you think about how you think you would have approached it if you had been the person who was asked to do something, and then you decide, is this reasonable? Is this intensification? Is this, you have to bring your own experience, your own idea of what's a good outcome, but you can't just say it happened twice before, and now it's intensification. You take that into consideration. But these words are not absolute black and white words, thereby inherently unclear.
I guess, I, you know, having really reread the whole special permit, start to finish.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah. Oh, I was having trouble sleeping last night, so it helped. I think there was a tremendous amount of thought put into that document. And yeah, there, like any document, the stuff that you don't talk about can be what gets you when, when the road gets a little rough. But I think there was a tremendous amount of thought put into the document. The document had the benefit of a ton of input from the neighbors. I'm not sure anybody came out totally happy out of the negotiations. I just look at the detail in that document that controls operations of Grace Farms in its three approved areas of use, and have a hard time believing if they intended to limit the number of people and the day-to-day operations of the property in terms of what buildings people were in, in terms of the number of people, in terms of count of people, that planning and zoning and everybody would have done that. And specifically called it out, just as if, as they specifically called out so many things on a variety of subjects. And to me, the governing item here in terms of number of people on site is really the parking, to the point where it's, they also divided up the parking by different types of events and the amount of parking, et cetera. So to me, I just don't see where there is three, you know, six months ago, and one and a half now, and two and a half later on, I'm not sure that a count of people under the normal course of business, again, if they changed and were using office and administrative to the point where it was not in support of your normal ongoing, you know, mission as a church, and, and there are other approved uses, then that would be a different story. But I don't see anything here that is outside of that. And therefore, I don't see any violation of the spirit of the agreement, or any intensification, or material alteration of use, or anything like that that would cause me personally to do other than exactly what Lynn did.
Can I just, John, I, I mean, if they were that specific about what they wanted, the board, that means to me that there was no, should be no changes. That means no changes should be made without consulting us. Not to say that if you went back to the board and they would say, okay, well, you know, we'll approve this, or, but to me, they were very specific about what they wanted.
And I agree, Laura, I agree exactly.
Don't change it.
No, no. If they were that specific, they would have said on today, you have so many parking spaces, you can, you know, you can never have any more than X number of people, well, excuse me. They did what, they were very specific on the things they were focused on. And I don't think.
So they didn't know what they, what was going to come up?
Well, no, at that point, they.
You know, don't.
I, I don't think, if you follow your line of logic, that would say nothing can change, therefore, anything that Grace Farms does to reasonably exercise and administer their business is subject to going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's not, the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't want to be in the hiring chain of any business in here, including Grace Farms. If it doesn't, you know, they don't want to come and see if you move a wall in Grace Farms to reorient space, other than to be sure it's in accordance with building codes and the normal course of business, I don't think they want to see that and approve every little twitch of Grace Farms. I think that's why you have 100 conditions in the document.
And an enforcement step.
And, and they have the right, either through Lynn, just as Steve did, or I'm sure by themselves, to reach in, having listened to this debate and seen it published in, in, in the newspapers, to say, whoa, wait a second, this is not what we intended. And they could then join with the neighbors and say, we need to sit down because to your earlier thing, Grace Farms has stepped over a line. I would agree with you that in these discussions, they have been very, very aggressive in their position, whether it, you know, whether it's over the last three sessions or prior to that, and that was in part by frustration earlier.
Well, remind me the date of when this, when the special permit was issued. What was that?
2017. And, and if you're.
I mean, maybe it's gotten, it's gotten to the point where it needs to be revisited again, because maybe, maybe Grace Farms needs that clarification once more about, hey, you know what, we've reached upon this gray area, and we need some, we need some guidance here.
And Laura, that, that may very well be, but I don't think that's our role. I think that, that P and Z has the ability to do that themselves.
Well, maybe we need to bring it in front of them to, in order to get them to say, hey, this is, this is becoming an issue here. We need, this keeps coming in front of us. This was, you wrote this, what, you know, what was your interpretation of it?
Well, respectfully, a lot of the neighbors already had that type of opportunity through litigation. already had that type of opportunity through litigation and through arbitration and discussion. I really think all we're being called upon with this particular appeal is to look at this specific, yes, it's under a special permit, but just this specific permit.
Right. Luke?
I, I'd agree with what Jessica and Laura and John are all saying. And that we're just looking at it under this permit. I don't think we can look at this as like a culmination of factors and send it back. I don't know, after Attorney Gelderman, you know, discussed intensification being ambiguous here, I think, and I think everyone on this board who's spoken so far believes that intensification is vague here. So then I guess, and I come back, and I think the, quite, the difference in views here is whether or not that vagueness, if we were in Lynn's shoes, if that vagueness is such that we would say, well, it's vague, but we should still issue the permit, or if we'd say it's vague and we should send it to P and Z. I'm hearing like those two different views. You know, on, on, everyone's agreeing it's ambiguous to some extent. And I guess the question is just, as a result of that ambiguity, should it have been sent to, back to P and Z to ask them? Or if that ambiguity is, is something that we can look at and interpret based on the other conditions of the permit? And that kind of brings me to my next question for Pete, Attorney Gelderman. Is if this was sent to P and Z, is there a mechanism for them to interpret their permit? Or are we stuck like a whole special permit application processing? And how, what would happen if we said this term's too vague?
Well, I think if the, the P and Z doesn't have to open up a whole new special permit. It could be, it can go back to P and Z for an interpretation of either that word or the permit, or maybe a broader interpretation. It would probably be brought to the P and Z by Grace Farms if you sustain the appeal, because it would be in their interest then to have the P and Z review it. And in effect, you know, make their interpretation. Not that it would be disagreeing with yours. You may say, we don't know. It's got to go to P and Z, let them decide. But if you, if you sustain the appeal, it'll be Grace Farms that'll go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for an interpretation so that this situation is dealt with by the P and Z. So if you sustain the appeal, it won't go back to the P and Z. It'll go to the court.
And what's the procedure for P and Z? Luke Tashin speaking again. What's the procedure for P and Z interpreting its decision? Is this, is it like a, I'm just not familiar with, you know?
It's not a usual, it's not a usual thing. But typically, somebody could write a letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's typically up to the chairman of the commission to put that on the agenda at some point in time and bring it up to the rest of the commission, usually in a, in a non-public hearing context, although he could do it in a public hearing if he opted for it. So it would really be up to the chairman to sort of schedule that if someone, if someone requested it. And again, I suppose the chairman could say, you know, we don't need to hear this. They could, he could say that, I suppose.
Would, would the chairman have a, like a public meeting on this and decide? Or what, could the chairman just decide himself, this is what it means?
Yeah, no, I would think it would probably be done in the context of a meeting, a public meeting. Maybe not a public hearing, but a public meeting.
Okay.
We're a little bit in uncharted territory here, so.
Yes, John?
Yeah, Laura, I, I just refer you all back to a couple of things in the document. One is in the recitals, and this is John Mahoney, and I'm talking about the, the special permit from 2017. First of all, in the recitals, it says, "P and Z finds that the uses and activities requested on the property can be effectively managed by the findings and stipulations in this special permit." That's fine, in the resolution, section resolution number seven. Under the general conditions, which is the same area where paragraph six sits, it said, paragraph four says, "Any violation of any condition or modification of approved activities of the special permit herein may be considered sufficient justification and cause for P and Z to rescind the special permit or modify the findings or conditions herein." The second, the final thing that I would just attention to, I think I mentioned it. Sorry, there was one other that I didn't mention in going back to recitals, which Lynn pointed out. Recital 12 says, "Parking is a key factor in managing the level of activity at the site." There is a, in activity level, a parking activity chart. Number five says, "Casual attendance up to 200 people on the site at any time for any and all activities." And then finally, under the parking and traffic, number 22, "Any parking or related changes, including, but not limited to the following, shall require an amendment to the site plan and special permit." And it goes into increase the number of parking spaces, expansion of paved surfaces, change in the lot configuration that was shown. So again, I come back to parking is the way that they man, primarily managed activity on the site. And P and Z has absolute control over any changes to the parking and has very specific requirements for reporting on the use of that parking placed on Grace Farms. So my read of this, with due respect, Laura, is they thought about how to best manage the impact of use in terms of people, and parking was the way that they controlled it. So I, my personal belief is that, you know, one or two things should have, we should rule on the appeal. I don't think our appeal is going back to ask them to clarify, but, you know, people obviously have different opinions, and that's, that's great. But to me, this either is P and Z needs to reach in, or what's going to happen is that the, the, the appellants are going to force litigation. And if they prevail, P and Z will be back in it anyway. But, but to me, I, you know, I, I don't think you have to list out each and everything. I think they've been clear on that they thoroughly considered the impact of people on this site and chose not to, for whatever reason, chose not to put anything in on the, how many administrative people they have. They don't, for example, say how many, how many clergy they can have. They don't say how many custodial people they can have. They don't, you know, none of that, right? Nowhere in here does it limit the number of, of people involved in the operation of the permitted uses. It does limit specifically parking. It does limit size of events. It limits where people can go on the property. It limits what types of outside activities, the hours of those activities, that they must be nonprofits, on and on and on and on. If, if, I can't believe that with all the things they were concerned about, that they somehow missed the number of administrative people or Grace Farms people, because it could be beyond Grace Farms people, that they just missed it. I just don't see it, nor do I think it's reasonable to think that they would want to be involved every time Grace Farms wanted to hire somebody.
But I guess it's more than that. It's about changing within the structure.
Well, that's why you have a building permit and everything, right? So they do care about that, and you have a whole, you have the, the zoning review, you have building permit review, you have sign off on all the, the appropriate functional people at, at Town Hall, fire marshal, et cetera. So it's not like they can do anything they want up there. They can't.
Luke Tashin speaking. So John, let's say, I, I, your analysis is obviously logical. I think, at least the way I see it, is if you had someone come to you to ask you for, for this permit, would you say that analysis is strong enough that you don't need an interpretation by P and Z? Or would you still think that this term's gray, so you'd want P and Z to opine on what they mean by it? Or do you not even see it as gray?
To me, Luke, I don't see what's being asked for here as gray. I, I think that the document, I, my reading of the document and everything that was restricted in, in the document in, from a whole variety of angles is sufficient to tell me that this particular item is, was considered and not required to be specifically addressed. Now, you could come up with other things. You know, again, if Grace Farms somehow doubled the size of their employee base without, you know, to the point where now it's clear they're not running one of the three approved uses, yeah, then I'd go back.
But John, then you don't need that, because then the first clause of section six would apply, where there can't be a material change of use. If all of a sudden they just started using for office space, then that's a mature-
It's an intensification of an original, well, the way I would have thought about it, legally, I might not be right, but the way I would have thought about it practically is at some point, you take a use that is approved because it is ancillary to the specifically approved uses. And then you, and now all of a sudden, you know, it becomes the whole thing. So for example, you know, here in town, if you have a retail store, a beauty store, that also starts doing Botox, if all they're doing is Botox out of it, and we, they get a special permit, and we've seen something like that, that to me is a change. That's a material, at some point, you cross the threshold. It's an intensification of an approved use beyond what was intended, because it's now not a beauty store, it's really a medical use.
But isn't that a change of use, though, not intensification?
No, because it, because we've had it where that use was approved via special permit, but it was, it was ancillary to the beauty store. So what my, my feeling here is there is a certain amount of administrative use and staff and everything else to guarantee the running, smooth operations of Grace Farms, just as there would be any business. And I don't think that, 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 I cannot believe that, that P and Z would want to get in on that hiring decision for anybody coming onto the Grace Farms family as an employee or contractor, or whatever it may be.
I have a question for Attorney Gelderman again, then. Who's the burden on in this case? Is it on the appellant?
Mm-hmm, yes.
What do you mean by that, Luke?
So I think this is an extremely difficult decision, like extremely difficult, in that I agree with your position and John's position, I think. So I think then an important factor becomes who is the burden on? Like, so let's assume it's a, like, who has, who has to establish the case? Let's say all things, maybe Attorney Gelderman could explain this better than me, than I can. But let's assume the burden is, like, who is the burden of persuasion on? Who has to carry the weight of the show here? If it's a tie, who essentially loses because they didn't carry the burden of convincing the people on the board that their position's right?
Well, generally, that's whoever takes the appeal.
Yeah.
It's their, you know, it's their action that's come to you. So it's, it's to that individual to prove to you that, or to establish that the permit should not have been issued. So I think it's, you know, what that standard is is probably the same standard as would exist in a civil case. You know, it's not beyond a reasonable doubt. It's simply a preponderance of the evidence. It's, it's much more likely than not to, you know?
I, I think if that becomes the decision, Laura, if they would have to establish by preponderance to the evidence, or more likely than not that they're right, I can't get past that point. I can get to a tie where I say it's gray and it should go back to P and Z, but that's not where the appellants have to get, it sounds like. It sounds like they have to get past, you know, 50%, which means the appeal gets denied.
Well, Luke, let me just expound on that just a little bit. A court, for example, in an appeal, if this went, if this goes to court, a judge is going to look at whether or not your decision is reasonably supported by the record. So, so, you know, is there substantial evidence, is the term that's used, to support your decision? And so that's really, you know, that's really standard. It's, the appellate has the burden in the sense that the appellate has brought the action. But the decision you make is based on substantial evidence in the record.
So, and what I was saying is I think there's substantial evidence in the record to support a position either way. So it essentially comes down to who's, who's the burden on? I don't think a judge would look at this either way and say there's not evidence in the record supporting that view. Maybe I'm wrong here, but-
No, no, I, I think that's, I think that's accurate.
Your point, though, there's substantial evidence to support an interpretation that this was not an intensification, particularly with respect to this one particular permit.
Correct. There can be substantial evidence that favors either, you know, both sides. I mean, there's substantial evidence in the record that says, sustain the appeal. There's substantial evidence in the record that says, deny the appeal. Court's going to make sure, though, that your, your decision is based on substantial evidence. So if it's there, if it's in the record, then generally, you're making a proper decision if it's based on substantial evidence.
I think the factors that John has raised, retire from me to imagine it's not substantial evidence.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's in tur, because if it's such a gray area that we're all, it's basically in disagreement of what the, the interpretation of intensification is, and there's seems to be no substantial evidence, you know, if that's such a subjective term, we all can agree on that, you know, there's evidence neither way on that.
Correct, which means the appellant didn't carry the burden of getting us past, you know, go.
Well, not necessarily. It doesn't necessarily mean that, Luke, because it, it just means that there is evidence in the record that could support either decision you make. The appellant brought the action, so the appellant does have a burden. But there doesn't have to, it's not as much a quantitative analysis as qualitative. You don't necessarily, as the board, have to determine, you're really determining who you think made the better argument, who you think made the correct argument. You've got substantial evidence, I think, to support either way you decide to go. I, I agree, the appellant does have a burden, but it's, 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 you, you wouldn't make your decision necessarily, I don't think, anyway, based strictly on, well, if it's 50/50, the, like you would in a, in a civil case. It's, the burden wasn't satisfied because- It's, the burden wasn't satisfied because it's 50/50. It's not so much a quantitative analysis in the case here. It's just whether you feel that there is substantial evidence to, and a court will look at that as well, whether there was substantial evidence to support a decision. So you're, even though you're kind of in it, when you're hearing an appeal, you're acting in a quasi judicial mode, so to speak. It's quasi judicial as opposed to administrative when you're granting a variance. So you are in effect fact finder and you determine how you apply those facts to this particular appeal. So that's, I know that's, you know, a little bit vague and it's, you know, kind of conceptual, but that's what it boils down to is, is simply weighing the factors that you heard and making a decision. And remember, your decision is simply whether that permit is based on whether that permit or should not have been issued.
Has the executive order on time, Luke Tash speaking, has the executive order for us to have more time to continue? This expired or do we have more time on this?
Well, I don't know what your timeline is for this application. Lynn, you can comment on that. You had a 90-day extension, but I don't know what, when the appeal was originally brought and where you are.
The appeal, I have to recount the days. The appeal was brought January 29th, I think. And it was opened on April 6th. And then you would have had 35 days to close the public hearing plus 90.
And you still have, by the way, you still have 65 days to make a decision, regardless of the executive order, because the public hearing closed tonight. So you have 65 days to make a decision.
So 65 plus the 90, they would get an extension, right?
If it's still in effect at the end of that 65 days.
So we still haven't, so we could, we don't, we still have plenty of time then to render a decision. We have another 60 days from today, at least you're saying.
Yes, you don't have to vote tonight. You have 65 days in which to render a decision.
Luke, is there a point that would not be resolved for you tonight that would be resolved in a month?
I don't know if there's a point per se. It's a lot of information I'm trying to distill in my mind at, you know, 10:40 at night. I don't think there's a point where I would change my mind on it, but I guess I haven't made up my mind yet either. So I don't know how to answer your question. I thought it was a lot clearer before we went into business session. I feel like it's rarer now. I do think who the burden on, who the burden is on is something that again makes it so that it would be easier if I had to vote on it tonight, to vote on it. But I, I think all the information from Attorney Gelderman is just kind of still kind of thinking of how it goes, I guess, how it all fits together. Like I don't think I need to review the facts or any questions that would necessarily change it based on the facts at all. People want to vote tonight, I don't think, I mean, I guess I would, but I don't know if there's a imminent need to, is what I'm saying.
I'd like to call the question. I'd like to have a motion. I don't know if it's Chairman, could I actually go ahead and say that? But I think we have heard everything that can be said on this matter. I think we have debated it at great length. I think it's a tough call, but eventually we have to decide, and I would like the decision tonight. And I think the appellants and the defendant are entitled to that.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's fair to push board members to the point where they, if they are undecided.
Of course it's fair. They're sitting here as board members to make decisions on tough questions. We do it all the time. We did it tonight. So we really need to get at it and make a decision.
And it's also why the governor and the legislature provides us with additional time to make it, with additional 60 days. You don't want people to rush to judgment.
Time here, as Mr. Geldman said, is already in statute. We closed the business hearing. We have 65 more days to decide. We could sit here for 64 more days. I don't see the point.
Well, don't we owe that to both sides in order?
No, we owe them a decision. They've had about three months of us thinking about it, talking about it, going back and forth. If the appellants want to get to the P and Z, we are sure in the way.
So you would close it tonight to, I guess, to uphold, to deny the, to uphold the appeal so they go to the P and Z, you're saying?
That could be
Because you said we're getting in the way of the P and Z.
Well, I would say we should hold a vote, but if, and if the board is still situated the way it was before we closed the business, and we went to business section, it's probably going to be sustained. The granting of the permit will probably be sustained. And then the appellants can do what they want to do. And there is precedent for the neighbors of this property going to the P and Z through the enforcement officer to get some resolution of their complaint. I don't think we are the place to resolve that complaint.
So Attorney Gelderman, is there, Luke Tash speaking, is there an advantage for us? Is there a reason why we would want to do not uphold the appeal? So that they have to go to P and Z as opposed to the mechanisms and the special permit on petitioning P and Z?
If you, if you sustain the appeal, I don't know, if you sustain the appeal, I would guess that Grace Farms would go to the P and Z. Because the appellant would have no reason to, because you've revoked a zoning permit, which is all you're really doing is revoking the zoning permit. So if you sustain the appeal, if you deny the appeal, then the the appellants are going to go to court. They've got a pending appeal from your last decision. And my guess is that they will attempt to consolidate the two appeals and to, and have the judge try to, you know, deal with both of them at the same time, even though they're separate issues and separate appeals, but they could be validated for trial. So that's probably what the appellant would do.
Jessica, anything more from you?
I think we need to be mindful of our authority with respect to this appeal. We were tasked with reviewing this particular appeal against this particular permit. And honestly, there are other mechanisms by which the neighbors and Grace Farms can take up whatever the other extenuating circumstances are around the special permit. That's not for the zoning board of appeals to determine. We're just being asked with looking at this one particular permit issuance, which we're really being asked, was it appropriate to be granted by our town employees who have some experience? And with looking at everything that we've been presented for evidence, did we feel her judgment in doing so was reasonable? That's what we're being tasked to do. I don't need more information to make a call on that.
Hi, Luke Tash speaking. I don't think it's whether or not we think Lynn's decision was reasonable. I think we're trying to put ourselves in her shoes and say, how would we have decided?
And would we have gone to zoning to get clarification?
I understand all those, but I believe it was discussed earlier that we could look at the reasonableness of that as the standard. When you were asking, Luke, about whether this would be based on the evidence, the evidence, things like that. So I do think there's a degree of reasonableness to it, but even looking at de novo, I don't need more discussion or information. I'm prepared to make a decision.
I guess I should ask, John, did you have something?
No.
I guess I should ask the other members of the board if they are also ready to make a decision. I mean, you've heard from Ben, Jessica, John.
I don't think I need additional deliberation at this point.
Do you, Luke?
Do I need it? I don't think I need it. I was saying since they gave us 60 more days to do it, since this, you know, the legislature says, you know, you have 60 more days, I don't see why, what the detriment of us using the time they gave us is because this is a, you know, very, at least it seems to me, very unusual matter. Like I said, I think I've heard everything I need to hear from everybody. I mean, there's no other fact or question I have at this point for anyone.
I mean, Luke, I certainly respect your caution and deliberateness. I guess we've already had three meetings on this topic. And I'm just not sure in my, for me personally, what more time would do. I mean, I know we have it. We're entitled to take it. I don't know whether that's to anybody's benefit. I mean, again, unless you need it, I'm prepared to make a decision tonight if, and Laura, same with you. I'm, or anybody on the board, I'm prepared, but I also want to be respectful of your being able to reach a conclusion.
But John, I appreciate that. If you, Luke Tash speaking, if you want to vote, if you want to close it tonight, John? No, I'd agree to close it and vote on it.
We're closed on it now, right? So we're, the public meeting is closed, so we can vote.
I meant vote. I meant to end our discussion, not close in the closing of the meeting context.
I mean, I'll go ahead, Laura, if you want and make a motion.
You know what? To be frank, I'm not sure I'm ready to do that.
Okay.
I feel like we've been, you know, you brought up, my mind was sort of made up, and then you brought up some other points that I need to really think about myself. But I don't know if I have that authority to put it off, but I don't know who has the final say, so.
I think you do.
Okay, well, then I'm going to say that we're not going to spend a lot more time on it, that's for sure. But we're going to, everyone needs to come back and be ready to make a final vote, and that's it.
Well, the hearing is closed, so we won't be hearing any more argument or information.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so we'll come back next month and we will hold a vote.
Well, but
we can have continuing discussion and then we can hold a vote.
Right, right.
Luke Tash speaking. Lynn, is this to uphold the appeal? Is it a four to five vote, like a variance or anything else?
Yes. I believe so. That's what I thought I read. Attorney Gelderman, could you answer that?
You need four votes to sustain the appeal. So it depends how you phrase the motion. If somebody eventually makes a motion and they move to deny the appeal, then two votes will do that. If you move to sustain the appeal, then you need four votes. It's a question of how you phrase your motion. But you need four votes to sustain the appeal.
Now, one more question. Before we have our vote, should the person making the motion include facts in it, or when a court's reviewing this, assuming it goes to court? Is it, does the court review the record as a whole, or do you want to include information in the vote itself?
Well, in the case of a review of an appeal, your reason simply, you would want to have a reason if you sustain the appeal. You want to set forth your reasons why you think the action of the zoning enforcement officer's staff was incorrect. If you deny the appeal, then really all you need to do is to say that the record was sufficient to, for the board to say that the action of the zoning enforcement officer was correct. So you don't have to have a whole lot of reasons, but you do want to set forth reasons if you decide to sustain the appeal.
Okay, I think that, so we officially say that we are going to hold it over until next month? Is that?
Yeah, just keep the business session open because nobody, nobody made a motion and you're going to wait until everybody's ready and somebody will make a motion and.
Okay, we're going to keep the business session open because we are not ready to, no one is ready to make a motion or there's a number of board members who are not ready to vote at this point. So we will hold off until next month. Okay? Sorry. All right, thank you.
Good night all.
Right.
Good night all.
We have
Wait, don't we have minutes and other things to do?
Oh, I sent my comments on the minutes to Lynn in advance, in an effort to reduce the time and heckling.
I don't think I ever saw the minutes.
Oh, they were in the drop down stuff that's online.
Calendar, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we had to go somewhere else for that?
No, no, it's right in the whole
It was in, when you pulled down the calendar link, it was one of the clickable links.
Planner's memo.
Well, I got the planner's memo separately. Lynn, Lynn, you need to prove that for me.
20 minutes or something like that. Anyway, whatever I had to say, I've said.
I'm sure you said it very well.
Attack is my middle name.
All right.
Good night all.
Well,
Do we need to vote on the minutes?
We need to vote on them.
Oh, we got to vote on it.
Hang on a sec.
You haven't seen my changes. You want to wait on the amendment, on the vote next time?
We could if you want, but ideally we could file it. I mean, some of it was just semantics. I mean, he changed countered to responded.
Yeah, instead of speaking for represented. So I didn't think it was anything that required great discussion. It was just minor editorial. I wasn't changing anything.
And inadvertently, we had a lowercase to refer to the board and he capitalized that correctly.
That's important stuff.
Yes.
Thank God we have you, Ben.
So I don't know how you want to do. You want to take my word for it that it's all good? And vote to approve the minutes?
I'd move to approve them.
Okay, go ahead.
Jessica, did you just second?
No, I think that might have been, I can't, I thought she already did. She already said second.
No, I dropped my head for a second, so I couldn't see. I just heard someone say second.
Ben might have seconded.
I did.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Lynn, can I just make two requests? One, if we could remind the homeowners that board members would be visiting their properties. I went out today and especially in this sort of environment, people were really kind of shaken that I was on their property and they were not expecting me. And so if we could just, and they said that they did not know that board members would be visiting their house. So, or their property. So if we could just remind them that potentially before variance that the board members come out, could we do that?
Sure, I actually think it's in our application materials and it's clear we stated, but we can remind them in this climate that you will be visiting.
Yeah, I was met with some heavy hands, but anyway. And then the second was, is there any way to get a hard copy of the, like some of the maps or the, some of the surveys and some of the, you know, architectural drawings? It's for, you know, moving forward, it's pretty hard to, I don't, for me, I don't know about the other board members to, you know, to really be thorough about it.
I agree. I'm finding it really difficult to review the surveys and things on a screen.
Yeah.
Under the executive order, under Executive Order 7I, and under Executive Order B, which allowed for virtual meetings, Executive Order 7I. allowed for virtual meetings, Executive Order 7I stipulated how the process is carried out, and it's virtual. So you, it's, everything's online, you put everything online. We're not doing delivery of packets, we're not, there is no, we haven't collected any originals to anyone's application. We've asked all the applicants to create an original, and after the crisis is over, to hand it in for all applications, for P and Z, for ZBA, and we are collecting it virtually, and we have a record of every application we've taken in from a zoning permit on up during this time period, and we'll fix the records and take in originals. The only piece of original we've taken in is the actual application sheet that we need to record with the town clerk, because though things can be done virtually, she's insisted on only accepting the original for the recording, so we've adapted our process. But everything's virtual. If you want a hard copy, then you can print it.
The problem is, you can't print one of these things and have it be legible unless you have a gigantic printer at your house.
Is there a way to do a zoomed version of the surveys and things that would, because the problem is printing it to an eight and a half by 11. So if they can do, before converting to PDF, something that's like a larger scale format view, maybe that would help us.
I can ask them. I mean, I whip out my magnifying glass even when it comes in large scale, so that's, I mean, I can ask them if they can, you know, do a zoomed-in version. The nice thing, on the computer, you can zoom in, and you can kind of, you can make things larger or smaller, so it kind of gives you the ability to change the perspective, I guess.
I think the challenge for most of us, though, is when we're looking and hearing the applications through Zoom, we're only either looking at your screen or hearing it, and if the documents are on our computers, we can't zoom live, really.
Yes, you can.
You know, it's challenging to follow along, at least for me. I like looking at a hard copy, personally.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe it's old school, but that's what I.
Jessica, you can also use your phone. I mean, that's why you see the image of me like at a different angle, because I'm looking at my computer, but the image of me is from my phone. So you can use two devices to make it easier.
You can also set it up so that one, the documents occupy one side of your computer screen, and the Zoom, and you can reduce them because I don't need to see John full-length, I can see a very small computer.
I guess we're saying like it the other way, but if there's any way you can accommodate us, Lynn, it would be much appreciated, but we understand your constraints, but we're just saying we like it the other way. I know I do, so.
And Lynn, I.
Yeah, I'm sorry, John.
I want to just go back on something that Luke had brought up, so that he feels that we actually do listen to him. If I go to the ZBA homepage, the pending applications right in the center of the page goes to P and Z applications.
That's what I was saying last week. The page doesn't work.
I listened to you, Luke. You have to, and so if you're on an iPad or a phone, the stuff that's over on the right-hand side, you can't get to.
Okay, so, let me see.
Go to newcanon.info, and then you go to government, right?
Well, if you, so yeah.
I'm saying, don't click on the calendar.
No, 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 don't go to government, planning.
Go to government, and then go to ZBA.
Oh, you're right.
Click it up right now, pending ZBA.
And then, when you go to ZBA, on the right side, it says pending ZBA applications, and everything's in there.
Yep, that's what I just wanted to do, pending ZBA.
Yeah, they, I think they fixed this because I was able to do it today, and last meeting it wasn't.
You can do it right here on that first screen where it says ZBA calendar, and then up comes both the Zoom address and all the documents.
No, I'm saying if you go to our ZBA webpage, though. Oh, sorry.
If you go through government, ZBA.
I could do it again. I mean, well, you shouldn't be going through government because government's like the.
No, but we're on there.
Click on government on your screen right in front of you.
We're on there. Go to government, ZBA.
That's not, you're going through departments, planning and zoning, and takes you to the department, and then you should use the bar to find pending ZBA applications, and you should be able to pull it up.
Yes.
No, go to our ZBA homepage. Go to the ZBA homepage.
This is our ZBA homepage.
No, that's the application.
No, that's the application.
If you go to government, ZBA.
Right.
Okay, that's the page that, which lists our names and everything, and meetings and everything. Click on that.
Oh, yeah, I can ask them to change that link, but the way to get there is, the two ways that it's set up is through the new canyon, through the calendar, and that's all the current links. So you have the agenda, the memo.
I know, but if you click on our page, depending application, it doesn't bring you to our pending applications, that's the problem.
Right, I can fix that link, but most people don't go through your page. They go through departments to planning and zoning. That's how we tell them to go, and.
What I'm telling.
Why would we go through planning and zoning?
Because we're zoning.
Well, no, I mean.
Planning and zoning is a P and Z commission.
Right.
I can tell them to fix it. It's very simple to fix that link, but the applicants and the public don't go that way to get to the site. You guys seem to be the only ones that go that way.
Well, you know why, though, Lynn? What I find is when I'm looking on a cell phone or a mobile device, I can't see this stuff over on the right-hand side in blue.
Oh, it shows up below, so it's like, when you see it on your mobile device, the two menus, scroll is one, so you have to scroll down the first to get to the second.
All right, well.
I still think we should just fix the link. Let's call it a night.
Yeah.
Wait, I have one more request of Lynn. The, I think the applicant should know that we don't want to see hand-drawn plans and specifications.
So that's not how it's worded. I can read you the exact wording, but that's, we can adjust that. It's a text change to the commission to change the regulations, but the way it's worded is that a variance application shall be accompanied by 10 copies of a sufficiently detailed plan for review by the board and its designees. So it doesn't specify it has to be signed and sealed or prepared by a licensed professional, and that's.
I don't know if we can do that. Can we require it to be signed by a licensed professional?
I can double-check on that. I think you can, but I don't know. I will double-check on that, but the way it's worded right now, and this isn't the first time, and there are a couple of applicants that have appeared before you that have produced, you know, drawings that look like professional drawings, but they're not licensed professionals, and they didn't sign or seal them.
Yeah, I hope if we can make that a requirement, I think we should.
I'll look into it. I mean, there's a planning subcommittee right now that was appointed and is currently looking at issues in the rights that need to be changed, so we can add that.
Well, I don't think we closed the motion.
For?
The minutes? It was seconded, but I don't think we actually voted.
No.
Tash in a favor.
Edmonds in favor.
Mahoney's favor.
Can we, can we adjourn now? I'm really tired.
Good night, Cinderella.
Look at me, and I've been working for two and a half months from home, with the YMCA daycare closed.
Yeah, oh, wow.
And the three-year-old, I am running on steam, or out of steam, whatever the saying goes, I can't even think of the saying. So have a nice night, everybody.
Lynn, is there any timetable for getting back into Town Hall when we might have meetings?
So right now, the timetable is the executive order from Governor Lamont closes Town Halls and public buildings through June 20th. The town needs that to be lifted. They'd like to open up, the 20th is a Saturday, they'd like to open up on the 22nd. The question is whether or not that would just be by appointment, or whether it would be just opening it up en masse for everyone to come in, and no one's sure. It's all going to depend on the numbers between now and then and what Governor Lamont does, so.
I'd move to adjourn the meeting. Can someone second it?
Yeah, second.
Second.
Wait, I'm opposed.
Tash in a favor.
Bye, Luke.
Have a nice night.
Night, everybody.
Good night. Bye.
Bye.